Listen up teachers, everybody in. I know things have been tough, but I'm not here to talk about that. I'm here to talk about right now.
You know what I see right now?
I see the smartest, strongest, most optimist people in the world. When I first met you, I didn't even know fascins existed.
Ha, I was so young then.
But now, I can do all sorts of stuff with them. For instance, you have three folds of my heart. I mean, I gotta save a little room for pizza. Eh? Most people see problems. You see potential. How do you even do that?
Seriously, if you have magic powers, you can tell me. Come on.
Look, I know there are still hard things ahead, but I've never seen you give up, so I won't either. And I'm pretty sure together, we can do anything.
So for me and kids everywhere, thank you for just being you.
We good? Good evening. Welcome to our May 8th regularly scheduled work session. Want to welcome all, any administrators that we have. If you, I probably can count you, but just wave. Thank you for joining us. And we will jump right into our committee reports. Also, I do want to pause before I skip over that, that we are all over the country and especially here at Muskogee County, pausing to celebrate Teacher Appreciation Week. Thank you is truly not enough to say thank you for all that you do. And they call it Teacher Appreciation Week, but I, I, I want to say thank you to all of the educators, because everyone in the building, you're all essential, whether you have a teaching certificate or not. We want to appreciate all educators and all who work in the building with our precious, precious children who are ready to get on with their summer break, as is, I'm sure, the people in the building, working with them, been out to a couple of schools, and I saw the evidence. Everybody's ready to go. So thank you for all that you do. Thank you for pressing through and persevering and making it through another, what I believe is going to be a successful school year. And we'll move right into our next item, which is our public agenda. We do not have anyone signed up, but I would like to take this opportunity for the public to read the disclaimer that I do every, every month. I got one of these sensitive. Citizens are encouraged to address item on the board agenda or to initiate presentations of issues appropriate for school board consideration. Board meet, the board meeting is not the appropriate place to review individual employee performance or individual parent complaints that have not been addressed by the principal or the superintendent. Citizens are encouraged to follow the normal channels to address such problems, which would be through superintendent's office, through Ms. Karen Jones. And with that, we will go into our presentation. We have a mental wealth wellness presentation. So, how do I? Okay, here we come.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Madam Chair, Board, Dr. Lewis. We are here to present some information about the Mental Wealth and Wellness Committee. Our committee members are listed. I won't read them all, but I will say that we are well represented by the Muskogee County School District Student Services Division, human resources, and as well as some of our community supporters. Our mission is meeting the needs of our stakeholders by guiding them to resources and services to increase mental wealth and wellness in our community. And we were commissioned to this task as a part of Muskogee County School District's COVID-19 response. So we'll start by just talking about some of the things that we do through student services. We'll highlight the Great Kindness Challenge, PBIS, which is Positive Behavior Interventions and Supports, multi-tiered systems of supports, Peer Helpers, 180 Degrees Student of the Year, REACH, and some, some of our information around our Employee Assistance Program, as well as our community partnership with Teen Advisors. So we have a 180 Degrees Student of the Year program that has been started through student services, where we recognize those students that have made a 180-degree turn with their behavior, their academics, as well as their attendance. This is a keynote presentation where we recognize elementary as well as middle and high school students. And we also serve our REACH Scholars. So the REACH program is a state of, the state of Georgia program, where we identify those low-income but academically promising students so that they can be supported both socially and academically. And at the end of their high school career, if they've maintained their GPA, then they have the opportunity to receive scholarships through our programs. Through the Department of Prevention and Intervention Practices, as far as mental wealth and wellness is concerned, we utilize the universal screening process to identify students who could potentially be at risk for social or behavioral concerns. We also provide support through our multi-tiered system of support and PBIS to provide intervention and prevention programs to those students, to support all students. We have school behavioral health supports. Some of our schools actually have onsite mental health providers to support those students. And then we use a community collaboration and care coordination process to assist students that would need outside services. We have recently opened the Parent or Family Resource Center. It is housed in the old Muskogee County Elementary School. And we have had several programs over there to support our families, students, and parents. The first event was for parents and guardians of our REACH Scholars, where they received a session on college and career readiness. Dr. Nelson?
Good evening. I'm Dr. Nelson, the Director of Counseling and Social Work Services. I'm gonna read because I have two minutes and I like to talk. So, students, unmet mental health needs can be a significant obstacle to student academic career and socio-emotional development, and even compromise school safety. Schools are often one of the first places where mental health crises and the needs of students are recognized and initially addressed. Of school-aged children who receive any behavioral and mental health services, 70 to 80% receive them at school. School counselors and social workers acknowledge that they may be the only counseling professional available to students and their families. School counselors and school social workers focus their efforts on designing and implementing comprehensive programs that provide responsive services, universal intervention and targeted interventions, individual and group counseling, crisis intervention that's focused on mental health, behavioral, and situational concerns. School counselors deliver counseling core curriculum lessons that proactively enhances awareness of mental health, promotes positive and healthy behaviors. Counselors and social workers recognize warning signs, and that's changes in school performance, which may be grades and attendance, mood changes, complaining of illness before school, increased disciplinary problems at school, experiencing problems at home or family situations, such as stress, trauma, divorce, substance abuse, exposure to poverty conditions, and domestic violence. We also communicate, receive communication from teachers about problems at school, and we also work to deal with existing mental health concerns. We provide school-based interventions, programs, like the Peer Helper Program, where we have a buddy program with our students, and also the Great Kindness Challenge, which is a bully prevention program. And I want to say that we are yet another kindness-certified school district. So yay. We provide students with individual planning, addressing their academic career, socio-emotional, including mental health needs. Educate teachers, administrators, parents, guardians, and community stakeholders about mental health concerns of our students. We advocate, collaborate, and coordinate with students, with school and community stakeholders to ensure that students and their families have access to mental health services. We also help identify and address students' mental health issues while working within the American School Counselor Association and the School Social Work Association America, ethical standards and competencies, as well as national, state, and local mandates. We recognize and address barriers to access mental health services and the associated stigma, and ensure that our most vulnerable population, such as our 2,128 McKinney Vento students that are experiencing homelessness, and their caregivers. We provide, thanks to the Georgia Department of Education, we now can offer free and direct access to tutoring and counseling services. Thank you.
What was that number on McKinney Vento?
2,128. Yes, ma'am.
Hello, I'm Tanya Carter, the Chief Human Resources Officer. And wanted to take an opportunity to share some information about how, when we look at employees, what resources they have to manage stress. They have several options, especially through the resources that we offer through the State Health Benefit Plan. There's access to a wellness program. And in that wellness program, you can go online and tap into some of the tools, tips, and techniques to help reduce stress. The wellness program itself offers a lot of challenges that you can participate in about eating right, taking steps, all of those types of things. And it actually has an, it's called Unwinding Anxiety. It's a app that is like calm. A lot of people have heard that. But we have free access to these resources, and it's very important to know that that's available. That ones in particular is about taking an intentional approach to reducing anxiety. When you do these types of things, you can help to reduce stress. In addition to that, there are, we have the pastoral care that's as part of support of our Employee Assistance Program. We also have, from a wide variety of resources, of offering podcasts that speak to a lot of the things that you may be interested in, that help to calm people. People listen to talk radio when they come in, or they listen to music. All of those types of things are available. They also teach you how to have a positive self-talk, positive affirmations, encourage you in how you speak and encourage others. That's extremely important. Support groups also are available, and they're specific to your needs, but it also lets you know that you're not alone in your struggles. And that's extremely important. A lot of people feel alone when they're experiencing some, some of their struggles. But finally, taking advantage of any healthcare services that we offer through the benefit plan is extremely important to take care of the whole self, especially when you think of having a primary care physician who can look at the totality of your health over time so that you can get a sense of what is changing versus going to several urgent care facilities. Those services are important, but if you want to look at the total, totality of health, it's important to have someone who can see how it is all fitting together. All of these things can be of help to our employees as we consider their mental health and making it as strong as possible. I'll be followed by School Nutrition.
Hello, I'm Eddie Crowell, Area Manager of School Nutrition. I'm filling in for Ms. Kelly McKenzie today. At School Nutrition, it's our mission to provide nutrition, meals, to maintain the health of schoolchildren in the educational community, as well as encourage the development of sound nutritional habits that will foster academic success. The national motto of School Nutrition is building healthy kids ready to learn. All right. School Nutrition, we provide nutritious economical meals for students and staff. Breakfast and lunch are served at all 52 schools every day. We serve an average of 25,000 lunches and 10,000 breakfasts every day. Our programs are the National School Breakfast Program, National School Lunch Program, Seamless Summer, and Afternoon Snack Care Program. Nutrition is a very important component of wellness, because we always say, a hungry child cannot learn. And the first thing a child does when they get home is tell their parents what they had for lunch. What makes a school breakfast? There are four components of a school breakfast. You have the grain, fruit or vegetable, milk. It can have a fourth component, either another grain or meat. And with offer versus serve, the students have to choose three out of four components, and one must be a half a cup of fruit or vegetables. For lunch, there are five components. The meat, the grain, dairy, fruit, vegetables. And offer versus serve, they have to choose a half a cup of fruit or a half a cup of vegetables, or a half a cup combination of at least two other components. We try to encourage them to take a little bit of everything. We'd really like for them to get all five components. We follow the USDA guidelines for nutrition. We make sure our menus meet the guidelines for each week for the amount of calories they can have, for the amount of sodium they can have, the amount of fat they can have. And we try to encourage them to try new things. You know, if you, if you give, if you present something three times to a child, normally by the third time, they will try it. We think of the kitchen as a learning lab. This is where they learn about new types of foods. It's also, this is a place where they get to apply their subtraction and addition at the cash register. The better health equals better learners. Kids with healthy eating patterns tend to have better grades, remember what was taught in class, behave better in class, and miss less school time. Nutrition, we want this, nutrition is the overall part of our students. And we wanted to spread the gospel of school nutrition, encourage you to let your kids eat with us, because we will keep your kids happy and healthy.
Hi, my name is Tabata Boyd, and I am filling in for Derek Roberts for Teen Advisors. I serve as the Director of our Ignite Program, which is our elementary school program, which you'll hear about in just a second. Teen Advisors has been serving Muskogee County for 36 years now. This organization has diligently served students in our growing and changing community. And we acknowledge that we are better together and value community partnerships and resources that are available in this great school district. Teen Advisors has continued to be innovative throughout the pandemic and the challenges that came with that to ensure that our youth and our children were not left behind by focusing on peer counseling, leadership development, and social emotional learning with an emphasis on peer-to-peer impact, with an increased attention to youth mental health first aid and mental health awareness. Our collaboration with this committee and the Muskogee County School District has been a joy and has helped us to have insight on how we could be a part of the solution to some of the needs in our community. This partnership has led us to launch our very own Ignite Program that launched in the 2021-22 school year, because we recognized that if we waited till middle school, it was too late. So we started serving elementary school students at Georgetown Elementary, and then we expanded to Downtown Elementary later that school year. This year, we've also added J.D. Davis to our growing list of students that we get to serve. In these schools, we serve 4th and 5th graders by students that are chosen by counselors or teachers. We spend time teaching them and focusing on social emotional learning, character development, and resiliency in an effort to create a positive change in each of the lives of the individual student, hoping that that will bring change to their families, to their classes, to the school, and to our community as a whole. We're hoping to also partner with Brewer Elementary and Winton Elementary in the fall. We are, Ignite has also allowed us to support those schools with their Great Kindness Challenge and their PBIS celebrations and encouraging growth in our peer helpers. Ignite has also provided transition to middle school sessions for 5th graders, where our high school students actually visit the 5th graders during the school day to encourage them in their transition and answer questions that they might have. They've taken place at Georgetown Elementary, Downtown Elementary, Winton, Brewer, Blanchard, and Genshin Elementary Schools. Teen Advisors has also partnered with the Muskogee County District, School District for the past three years in collaboration with Youth Mental Health Awareness Week by hosting a 5K and a one-mile fundraiser that is focused on mental health awareness, benefiting both Teen Advisors and the local Muskogee County School District Counseling Departments. This past weekend, we hosted our third annual 5K. We had 180 registered participants in our community and four community partners. And the top three schools from the Muskogee County District that supported us this past weekend were Columbus High School, Northside High School, Richards Middle School. And these schools will be receiving a $400 prize from Teen Advisors to support their local counseling department.
Thank you, Tabata. I'm Maryless West from the Pastoral Institute, and I'm super excited to be here. And I'm super excited to be working with this committee. Dr. Victor Nelson has been a great leader through the pandemic for us. I just want to say, as we come into this space, the Pastoral Institute has supported the Muskogee County School District for many, many years, and it's very important to us. When we walk the halls, we are concerned about you. We are thinking about you. We are doing the work. And Tabata talked about the students, but the Pastoral Institute takes care of the caregivers, the people who are on the ground, the counselors, the social workers, the teachers, the bus drivers, the janitors, through the EAP program and beyond. In the beginning of the pandemic, we weren't able to reach and touch you as we had in the past, and we had a lot of conversations about how to do that. And so what we did was, we created virtual sessions that the teachers could come into on a regular basis, but then we also created videos. We created videos for the children that they could see, and they went out once a month, and for the students and the teachers as well. And so, once a month, video presentations went out to talk about mental health, to reduce the stigma. We, we did a lot of work. And we got a phone call, and I'll say, I have Laura Carden here with me. We got a phone call from Muskogee County about doing some work, and we talked about how much it would cost. And Muskogee County said, um, I'm not sure we're gonna be able to pull that off. And so we reached out to the Coronavirus Response Fund, and they funded the project. And so Muskogee County, with that project, was able to help other school districts, because we were able to share the videos that were created for Muskogee County with Russell County, Harris County, and other counties, because they got wind of it, and they were able to, the counselors were able to use these videos in their schools as well. I want to say, as we move forward, on our, on the website, on our website, on our YouTube page, Muskogee County website, are, the links are there for the videos. The work is still being done. Tomorrow, we'll be at the Resource Fair. This weekend, we were at the 5K, and we support the work that is done here. But one thing that I'm, I'm super passionate about is I have 15 seconds left, is that in this community and in the time we live in, it matters, taking care of people's mental health. And it does start very, very early. And I commend Muskogee County School District on the work that you do. And as we digress into the summer, I know for a fact that the work does not end. And as we prepare, moving forward, just remember that we are there to come alongside of you, to hold your hand, to care for you. We've got many phone calls, where we've had people come into our building that were in distress, that could not make it through that day. Where Muskogee County, an administrator, an HR person called and said, "We need some help." We've given clinical advice, and we continue to want to do that for you guys. So I just want to say, thank you to you guys. It's Teacher Appreciation Week. Hey, y'all. Thank you to you guys, to the board, to the staff, to the faculty, to everyone. The work that we do is important, and thank you for allowing us to do it.
So in closing, I have a slide with just some of the other community resources that we utilize to provide mental wealth and wellness support to our community, our students, our teachers, as well as our parents. And I want to close by saying that this May is Mental Health Awareness Month, in case you were wondering why we were bringing you this presentation right now. And we are also observing Mental Wealth and Wellness Week in our schools this week. Thank you so much.
Are there any questions? Ms. Buckner?
I want to, I think I have three questions. And the first one is concerning the counselors. With the increasing needs of students.
School students.
With the increasing needs of students, mental health issues, and then that along with the increasing paperwork for counselors, how are, how are we managing to do all the things that you say we do? And, of course, some of these needs for students are maybe beyond that of a, of a school social worker. So how are we dealing with that?
Well, we partner with community agencies. That's one of our, we have what we call Continuum of Care. So 211, we work with Courtney Lamar, who's our mental health coordinator. There's wonderful agencies. We have a wealth of people who are wanting to help our students and staff. So we do quite a bit of referrals for connecting families to outside agencies.
Is that free?
Some are free, some are on sliding scales. And we do have an option that's called the Georgia Crisis and Access Line, or GCOW, which is free. It's 24 hours, seven days a week, 365 days a year. A crisis stabilization unit will come to your home, to the school, to the grocery store, wherever you are in crisis, they will meet you there. And it's absolutely free.
Okay, what about the, um, the paperwork for counselors? It's just there. You gotta just deal with it?
Yes. Yes. So, um, it's, yes, paperwork is, is essential. Um, documentation is essential. Uh, we do partner with the counselors, the grad coaches, as well as the social workers. Um, we have some great partnerships within our school district to help, to alleviate some of that.
We have graduation coaches.
I'm sorry?
We have graduation coaches.
Yes, we have three regional graduation coaches, one per each region. And they primarily work with high school, but we do, um, what we call Tier Three interventions for eighth graders in the high, uh, middle schools. So that's our target audience, but there's three per each region.
You said three, three per region?
Uh, three, I'm sorry, three, uh, one per region, three in the district. Yes.
And they assist in?
To assist. Mm, yes.
Okay. Now, do y'all have, um, do counselors have like, uh, technicians or, or somebody else, uh, some kind of assistance in their offices?
Uh, m- most of our high schools, they have what we call a guidance clerk, um, at the high schools. Uh, middle schools, you know, it's all together, kind of working together. Uh, there's not someone that's designated. Um, and elementary, we, we do not have a guidance clerk in the elementary schools, but we, we work together with the registers.
Okay, thank you. Do we just do our best with all that paperwork? Thank you. And, um, the, uh, another question was about the teen advisors. Um, I kinda want to know what that looked like. Um, what do the teen advisors do now? What do the teen advisors do? Now, I know you gave a whole list of stuff.
What do our actual teen advisor students do?
Yeah, what was the per, yeah, what was like, "We developed teen advisors because," or what do they do?
Okay, so Teen Advisors is a peer mentoring group, so any s-
Peer mentoring.
Yes, so any student in the Muskogee County School District that's in, we have three programs within Teen Advisors Inc., so it's Ignite, which services the fourth and fifth graders. Those students we go-
Somehow I missed that, ma'am. It's a peer advisor group. I, I, I don't know.
Oh, okay.
I don't know where I was. I missed it. So it's peer advisor?
Peer advisor. So we have staff that pours into our students. We kinda do like a circle in, circle out type thing. So we build community for our students that join the Teen Advisors program. We provide, um, events for them, uh, we do a weekly gathering.
It's voluntary? The, the ones that join?
The students that join, yes. So we pour into them, and then we challenge them to go into their schools and, and pour into their peers. And so they do that through classroom sessions at the middle school. The seventh and eighth graders go and talk to the, uh, sixth graders, and the tenth, eleventh, and twelfth graders go and talk to the ninth graders. We also serve college students that are grad staff that also give back to the students that we're serving.
What's the cost for the, for the students and their families?
Um, so for Teen Advisors, um, there's no cost to Muskogee County School District for anything that we do that partners with the school. Now, the students that join Teen Advisors, um, I'm not sure what the velocity price is, but I know the high school price is a hundred and fifty dollars for the school year. And that, um, pays for a retreat that we go on in the Labor Day weekend, and then it's pays for all the events that they do throughout the year. Um, and so that's the only thing that our students pay for, but Muskogee County doesn't pay for any of the services that we offer.
But they do take donations?
Oh, yes.
So if you're interested in giving money to Teen Advisors, you can.
Did that answer your question?
Yeah, that was good. And I like, um, the incentive to those schools that participated.
Pardon me?
The incentive. I like the incentive that y'all give those students the full argument.
Yeah, so, we, um, the schools that have the most participation in the five K because it is youth mental health awareness. We want to bring awareness to that, and we know that our counseling departments also take donations, right? And so, um, the schools that had the most participation as far as participants and runners, um, they got to choose which school they were representing, whether it was a teacher or a student. And then those top three schools get the four-hundred-dollar prize this year.
And what do you do for the students who cannot pay? How do you support them?
So we do have, um, scholarships, um, so the parent could fill out a scholarship form, and that would help pay for those students that aren't able to. So we discuss that whenever we're, um, recruiting students or inviting students to be a part of Teen Advisors, never to let finances be something that hinders them from being a part of Teen Advisors. Um, because the, in some of the other schools, I know when I was serving on the high school program, we went to some of the other schools like maybe Carver, so we'd have special codes for those schools that might not be able to have the resources to join. But we never let finances hinder somebody from being a part.
No, do you?
You, you named a school.
Pardon me?
You named a school that you code specifically.
Pardon me?
You named a school that you all flag, um, if there is some inability to pay, so I want you to kinda clear that up.
Okay, I apologize for that. Um.
Is it based on reduced lunches, ma'am?
Based on
Probably reduced participation.
The needs of the families. So, when I was serving in those school, in some of the schools in our district, um, the need was greater at some schools than there was at others. That's what I mean by that. So I apologize for that. Um, I didn't mean to target any specific thing. But, um, our heart and our desire really is to service those that don't have the resources. We do have schools, you know, that have access to other things that other schools do not, and our heart is to go after those so that all of the students in Muskogee County can have the same opportunities.
Oh, and that, um, I, I actually would like to participate in that, um, that run. Do y'all advertise it? I don't know. I missed it.
So we have advertised it through the Muskogee County School District. Um, it partnered with Muskogee County, so it went out through the schools. We put up flyers.
Is it at the same time?
Pardon me?
Is it at the same time every year? So I can actually-
It's usually in the-
I can look out for it. I'm just asking you to do this.
Yes, for mental health awareness, yes.
Oh, during this time in May?
Yes, because it's a, it's a mental health awareness thing, so we try to do it in May. Um, that's what the focus is.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
I just have a couple of questions. Um, in the presentation, um, Dr. Nelson, you mentioned that, um, we have services available for students and for employees. Is there a criteria? Is that every employee, including bus drivers, cafeteria workers, part-time, full-time, everyone has access to the mental health services?
Yes, we have the Employee Assistance Program that's available to all. Uh, as far as in the schools, the school counselors work with the teachers and staff to, um, provide what we call calming rooms or e-combing rooms. That's where they can go and relax, but we also do mindful, uh, minutes. Uh, we provide
Right.
Counseling, uh, we connect them to EAP programs within the schools.
But the professional services, for example, going to the Pastoria Institute? They have three visits? Is that still the case?
Is it five? Five per calendar year?
Five per calendar year?
Yes.
And, um, I'm, I'm not concerned about privacy, but can you explain to me the logistics of if we have an employee or a student for that matter who's having a crisis? How do we make sure we provide the services but also maintain the privacy of the individual?
Well, we are bound by ethical standards, confidentiality, so, um, we have the American Counselors Association, the American, uh, the American Counseling Association, that we're required, um, to uphold a student's confidence as well as a teacher, so whoever's in our care at the moment. Uh, there are reasons that we have to breach confidentiality, and that's if a person's in danger of hurting themselves or others.
But what, logistically, what does it look like? Like, do they come to the school counselor to get services?
Yes.
And what if it's a teacher? She also goes to the school counselor?
Not always. Uh, depends on the relationship. So some are, because they know that person, they're in the building, they're accessible. Uh, they will come directly to the counselor. The counselor will then connect them to the principal, um, if needed, in confidence. Um, and, or directly to the EAP program, recommending, um, I'm, just give you an example. I had a teacher who did not feel comfortable releasing that information. So, um, I, the principal, trusted my opinion, and I made sure that that person got to where they needed to be, which was, uh, the Pastoral Institute. And that was, I just asked the principal to, uh, trust me that this person was in care, was receiving care.
And, um, if someone has a private, um, counselor, um, and they're an employee, is that currently covered under our health plan, or?
I'm gonna defer that. Yeah, that's true.
Yes, Ms. Jamers, they, it is covered under the health plan. There's a limited number of visits. Uh, but what we have through EAP, or if there's a, a situation where they're referred, um, we are also held under confidence in HR, and we can guide them to the right path with the Pastoral Institute being one of the first stops. Uh, sometimes it does not meet the need, and so we seek referrals. But we try to make sure that they're, they, the focus is to get them to the appropriate location, to get the kind of care that they need. Uh, and if they have, uh, health benefits through us, a good portion of it is covered.
That's great, because I know in some cases, and in the past, mental health has not been covered. And since COVID, there's been an uptick of the need for mental health services. So I'm glad that we're including that and doing everything we can, um, Dr. Nelson and your group. Great job. I like the things that I heard today. Very good.
Just wanted to also add, um, that we also offer, uh, the teachers can receive telehealth. So if they're not comfortable going into the building, they can do it either by call or through video conferencing.
I have Mrs. Green. Wanted to get my third question in? Okay, and it was, uh, for Mrs. Carter, uh, just to, uh, I want to know how did that support group for, uh, employees, what does that look like?
Support groups? Uh, it's along the same lines as, uh, reaching out to, say, pastoral care and local services in the community. Uh, we can find, based on the need of the individual, we can, uh, identify some of the different support groups that they can join.
Oh, you're, you're, that support group meant, meant identifying support groups?
Right. We don't have support groups where we can direct them to the appropriate support group.
Okay, I just wanted to know what, what that meant. Okay. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Buckner, since you have the microphone, um, we'll go into our committee reports, and we have education up.
I see, I think I see them. Oh, no. I thought I saw them coming. I just saw people leaving. Uh, our, uh, first item is on the, uh, math adoption. And I do see someone coming. Ms. Hole, yeah.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Board Members, Dr. Lewis. We are very excited this evening to bring you a presentation on information about our new mathematics adoption for kindergarten through fifth grade. And this is our proposal based on a long year's worth of work and a committee that has come together from across the district, representatives from all grade levels, all elementary schools, and I know that we have some of those committee members here with us tonight, taking time out of their night to come and support this presentation. So if you did serve on our math adoption committee, would you please stand at this time so we can recognize you? Uh, so we have, uh, Ms. Allen from Genshin, we have Ms. Reese from Britt David, and we have, stand up. We have Ms. Lindsay White, who is, uh, one of our pre-K academic coaches. So thank you all for being here in support of this. But there were almost forty committee members involved in this long process to make sure that as we choose a curriculum and a resource, that is a resource for our teachers to use in elementary mathematics, that we were doing the best that we could to choose the best out there for our students. And it is my pleasure to introduce Mr. Quint Deloche. He is our K-five mathematics content specialist. He has headed up this committee, and he has been the, the name and the face and the work of this entire process. And he's going to bring you a presentation tonight explaining the adoption process, explaining the resource, and the reasons why our committee selected this resource for your perusal. So, thank you. And Quint?
Good evening, Dr. Lewis, Madam Chair, Board Members, and Cabinet. Um, I'm excited to stand before you tonight to present on our adoption for K-five mathematics. As Ms. Hole indicated, it has been a year-long process. Um, and I appreciate the committee working with me to make sure that we, um, present to you what we feel is the best choice. So, the first thing I'll do is just go through the timeline and share with you, um, how we got to this point. Um, we s- I'm sorry. We started back in October. Um, that's when the committee was established. We had, um, as Ms. Hole indicated, classroom teachers, general ed, and special education teachers, um, academic coaches, assistant principals, principals, and representatives from the Program for Exceptional Students, the Division of Information Services, as well as representatives from ESOL and St. Elmo. In October, I also reviewed and modified the MCSD Instructional Materials Adoption Manual and the rubric just to make sure that they both cater to our needs for K-five mathematics. And then I secured the samples and requested that the publishers send them here to the, um, Public Education Center for display. And I wrapped up October by facilitating an initial meeting to make sure that the committee understood, um, basically the background of the adoption in terms of the manual and the rubric so that when we got to our December meeting, um, they are very well prepared to dive into the resources and evaluate them. So, in December, we did have our first evaluation meeting, and that's where the committee, um, combed through seven different resources, and they completed the rubric. And at the conclusion of that meeting, I compiled the data and identified the top three publishers. And in January, I shared that, shared that information with the committee, um, as well as invited, I invited the, um, vendors to come to the, um, vendor presentation meeting in February. So, in February, that vendor presentation meeting was conducted here in the boardroom. We had three vendors come share about their product, answer the questions from the committee. And the committee members completed the rubrics. I again compiled that data and narrowed it down to the top one. So, throughout March and April, I conducted meetings with the vendors just to shore up any questions that the teachers had from our, or the adoption committee had from our meeting. And then we also just had the committee or the vendor share with us other school districts across the state of Georgia that are using the, um, program that we're recommending, as well as we had a meeting with one of those districts just to figure out the logistics and, and basically talk about the things that they've seen in their district since adopting the resource. And that brings us to tonight, where I'm presenting the recommendation to Superintendent and the School Board. So, our criteria for the selection and evaluation, um, we looked at six different areas. The first one being the content. And with content, we were looking at making sure that the program is aligned with the Georgia K-12 mathematics standards that will be implemented in August of 2023. So in August of 2021, the State Board of Education approved the new math, or the revised math standards to replace our Georgia Standards of Excellence. We also looked at the organization and presentation, so making sure there are opportunities for direct instruction, independent practice, and following the gradual release of responsibility. Equity and accessibility is another area we looked at, making sure that the product met the needs of all of our students and that the learning is differentiated. And then we looked at the instructional design and support, making sure that there are opportunities for our students to develop their critical thinking skills. Um, and also making sure that there's a variety of strategies that the students may use to, um, activate their prior kno- prior knowledge and then engage with the grade level standards. In both of those categories, we did ma- make sure that we looked at how the resource connected with our, with our personalized learning initiative. Our fifth category is assessment, just making sure that they are formative and summative assessments, um, and multiple means of assessment. And making sure that those assessments mirror what the students will see on the Georgia Milestones Assessment System, so having the technology-enhanced items. Um, and also making sure that teachers can get adequate data and be able to make informed decisions when it comes to, um, making sure that our students understand the standards. And then our last category is technology, and just making sure that our teachers had the adequate resources to, um, meet our students' needs using technology. So there's a digital platform, and I'll share information with you about the student and the teacher, um, dashboard. And we also looked at how the program connects with our, um, single sign-on service, Clever, as well as our LMS Canvas. And that brings me to the recommendation. So, the, after compiling the data from the committee, we are recommending Curriculum Associates iReady Classroom Mathematics. Some of the highlights of iReady Classroom Mathematics is that it is student, um, it focuses on developing a student-centered classroom- Some of the highlights of iReady Classroom Mathematics is that it is student, it focuses on developing a student-centered classroom. So making sure that the teacher is a facilitator of the learning, but the students are really taking control of their own learning. There are hands-on activities throughout the program. In kindergarten, the students have activity-based assessments, which is really important as our kindergarten students are beginning this path of K-12 education. They're learning, you know, how school works, how things function. And sometimes, multiple-choice assessments and those sorts of things are not necessarily appropriate for that grade level. So making sure that they have something appropriate for their young minds. There are daily number sense activities, which is really important because building number sense is going to ensure our students' success as they move from kindergarten all the way through 12th grade and even into adulthood. So, there are various number sense routines throughout the program. And then finally, there are student-led centers in grades, kindergarten and first. And again, allowing the students to really lead that small group work that they're doing and having fun while learning mathematics. Some basic components of iReady Classroom Mathematics for the students, they will receive a two-volume student consumable. And basically, a consumable is the textbook and the workbook meshed together. So no longer do we have a hardback textbook and then a paperback workbook there combined. And the students will receive, or we will receive a shipment of the student consumables each year throughout the term of our subscription, and that is six years. And then students will also have access to the digital platform. On the teacher's side, it's really more of the same. But the difference here is that the teacher shipment is only going to be our first year of the contract because the teachers will reuse their teacher additions for the life of our subscription. And then again, there's the digital access for the term of the subscription. So when it comes to the alignment of Georgia's K-12 mathematics standards, which again are the revised math standards that are going to be implemented in August, we have Georgia enhancement activities that the teachers have access to in their teacher toolbox within the dashboard. Those activities come with educator notes, and they may be one-day activities or multi-day activities. So when it comes to the structure of the lesson, it's designed like a traditional textbook. However, each unit is broken up into lessons, and those really replace what we have traditionally seen as chapters. And then each lesson is broken down into sessions. And one of the nice things about the lessons is that they're broken down into a five-day plan, so to speak. Day one is where they explore the content. They're looking at prior knowledge and making sure that their prerequisite skills are up to par before they actually dig into those grade level standards. And as we prepare our students continuously, you know, there are gaps, and those gaps were widened by COVID. This will allow the teachers to really hone in on the areas that are going to be important for the students as they engage with the grade level standards. And in day two, three, and four, that's where students work in the developed sessions. And this is where they focus on that grade level instruction. And day five is where they refine their learning. So there's some independent practice as well as differentiation. And I do want to stress, while differentiation is only listed on day five, it is fluid throughout the other days, but on day five, it's specific to what the students need. All right, so, the next couple of slides go through the teacher and the student dashboard. When I get to the teacher dashboard, I did share with you a handout that has four, there are four pages to it. It just has a better view for you to actually see what I'll be discussing. So, for the student digital experience, inside of the student dashboard, they will have access to their to-do list. And this is where they can see the assignments that their teachers have assigned to them, as well as assignments that may have come from their diagnostic. So, to the right, where it says teacher assign, that's my path, and that's the personalized learning path. So, when the students take the diagnostic assessment at the beginning of the year, it will basically place them where they are, and it'll give them practice to help meet their areas of need. There is also a place for them to monitor their own progress. There's a family center, which is really great because we talk about the fact that schools cannot do it alone. And it's important that, you know, our parents support us here. And this platform has a place for parents to go re, go access, to gain access to additional resources to support their child at home. And not only do those resources just have a bunch of words, it also shows, in some cases, models and examples that may use new math strategies that we are currently teaching. There is also the bookshelf, and this is where students can have access to the digital textbook at home. So, instead of them, or if they forget their math consumable at school, or forget a page, if they rip it out, then they can access that online. And then to make learning fun and be able to use the manipulatives that they use at school, there is also a digital math tools area as well. So, most households don't have fraction box, blocks, or base ten blocks, but the students can access those things through this platform. And then finally, there are learning games that are tied to the students' grade level skills, as well as the skills based on their diagnostic performance. When it comes to the teacher digital experience, the teachers have access to instructional resources and assessments. But on top of that, they have access to the data that is provided within the program. So there are diagnostic status reports, diagnostic results, a comprehension check, diagnostic growth, as well as the teacher toolbox. And inside of that teacher toolbox, that'll be where the teachers can access the differentiated activities based on where their students are. And they get that information from the numerous assessments that are within the program. So there are really four layers here. There's the diagnostic, which is given at least one to three times a year. There are unit assessments. Inside of the, each unit, there are also mid-unit assessments, as well as comprehension checks. And then, in each lesson, there are lesson quizzes and comprehension checks as well. And then as needed, you can see there are assessments, or there's an assessment practice book that the teacher has access to, as well as the games, and then some other informal assessments. So to dive into the data a little bit, and the next couple of slides actually highlight what the teachers are really excited about when we reviewed the product. This here is the prerequisite report from the diagnostic. And as you can see in this report, at the bottom in section five, it actually provides a diff, a breakdown. So the teacher will know which students are in Group A. And typically, in Group A, that's the student who has mastered their basic multiplication facts. They're doing well with multiplication and division, as well as word problems involving multiplication and division. And then as you move to the right, you can see that in Group B, there are some need, or there is a need for additional support in the essential skills section. And then in Groups C and D, you can see where it indicates in-depth review and then additional support for the basic facts. So, th- this really helps the teacher not only have access to the data, but take action based on what the program has diagnosed the students or their levels. And then this is just another slide here, just showing the diagnostic report. This is from the class-level view. It also shows a breakdown by domain. And the red, yellow, and green sections here just show the students who are either mid or above grade level, who are at the beginning stages of grade level. And then the yellow begins the process, or begins the section where students are either one grade level or up to three or more grade levels behind. So it's really, again, giving you a really good prescription for what the students will need to get to the point of understanding grade level standards. As I mentioned, within each lesson and within each unit, there are comprehension checks. This next report just shows you an item analysis. So to be able to give the teacher a quick view of, okay, how many students answered question one correctly? And how many students may have answered it incorrectly? And then the other thing I like about this here is that it shows the amount of time. Because if a student has red circles all the way across, are we looking at a stamina issue? Or are they just clicking through, or do they really not understand the content? So it really be, the, the teachers will really be able to drive down and look at the data. And this is also critical for our administrators as well and our academic coaches as they're working with the teachers in the building and the students to be able to really look into the data and identify issues and help teachers, help our students overcome those issues. And then, this is just another image of that comprehension check. This is at the student level for the teacher. What you can see on this particular slide is actually how the student answered the question. And then down at the bottom in section six, it shows if a student answered with this answer, they may have been thinking this, or they may have solved the problem this way. So it really, again, gives the teacher some data to work with to address those misconceptions. When it comes to accessibility, there are options or features that address audio support, as well as closed captioning, color contrast, keyboard navigation. And this chart right here just shows you where those different features are available. And then we also are making sure that we support our English language learners. So in addition to Spanish, there are resources available in other areas. And I won't name all of the languages, but if you look under instruction for the multilingual glossary, you can see there are multiple languages listed there. And then when we look at the family resources, there are multiple languages there to support the families at home as well. All right. And then to wrap this up, kind of the most important part for us to really make sure this program, or we get the most from this program, is the professional development and making sure that our teachers have the support to utilize this resource in their classroom. So, our proposal is to have a preview before summer break. If we have teachers who'd like to dig into the program and become familiarized with it before they return in August, with this launch training, we hope we can at least start that conversation or start that exploration for them. Then we have the back-to-school, which is an in-depth training to begin the product usage. And this will be for our administrators and our academic coaches, as well as our teachers. Because again, we really need everyone on board for this product to be used effectively. Then we'll continue that professional development throughout the year. There's the developing mathematical thinkers through instructional routines. So, this is a resource we want to continue to make sure we develop our teachers' pedagogy when it comes to mathematics. So making sure that they have that ongoing support to utilize the program, but also teach mathematics. And then finally, tailored support visits. These visits will be to our schools, individual schools. And to determine the needs during those visits, Curriculum Associates will consult with our building-level administrators to see what their needs are in figuring out a way to better support their teachers and make sure that they're seeing the growth that we would like to see from our students throughout the usage of this program. And that concludes my presentation. Does anyone have any questions?
Just real quick, before you ask questions, we do want to call attention to the finance item that goes along with this presentation. I believe it's 10.02. Are the financials that include both the resource and the professional development?
Okay. Questions?
I do have a question. This program, first of all, I think is great. Is it going to be a supplement or the actual textbook?
It's the actual textbook.
Okay. And- The primary resource, okay? Because there's a difference, because I think we use the reading program like a supplement. And I just wanted to make sure that I'm thinking about this in the same, in the same manner. From a support perspective, will you, or the district, I guess, or the region, have access to the data? Or are you going to have to go out to the school to see how you can support? Because sometimes, especially with something new, when you're going to roll it out, sometimes you don't know the question to ask, or you don't know the support to request. Is there going to be some additional eyes on it to help, you know, try to catch it before we let it?
Yes, ma'am. So district-level administrators will have access to the administrator dashboard from the district level to be able to go in and look at the district as a whole, as well as individual schools, to determine where needs are. And then I will provide support to the schools and academic coaches to make sure that they support teachers in-
Without waiting on them to ask for it?
Yes, ma'am. We'll be able to make some more informed decisions when it comes to planning professional development.
Great. Thank you.
I heard several things that I liked, but two that came to mind is, I really, it had a thing where it had a flag alert, where if the student had gone to it, threw it very fast, that it would alert them to that. I think that's a great thing, whether it is because they didn't understand it, or they just, for whatever reason, that day, didn't want to take the time to do it.
Too late, too late, mine graduate.
I thought that was a very good thing. I also like the daily number sense activities. I was thinking we adults might need that too. Since it is a consumable, and we will get new ones every year, does that mean they can keep it at the end of the school year?
Yes, ma'am, that is correct.
Okay, I like that too. Although, I mean, I usually tend to worry about our trees, but now that everybody reads online anyway, our trees are doing better. So, I like that they'll be able to take it home for the summer. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I just have a couple of questions. Well, first of all, I want to say I love this program. Excellent presentation. A lot of my questions you answered. But I do, if you could explain to me, because one of my questions was, is there a pre-test? And I saw on your presentation, it said, there's a process that alleviates the need for a pre-test. Can you explain that to me?
So, in the, that prerequisites report, actually, is, the, is part of the diagnostic, where that data comes from the diagnostic that the students will take at the beginning, middle, and end of the year? So instead of having to wait until you begin Unit Two, that data will already be captured based on the running data within the program. So teachers will be able to make informed decisions using that prerequisite report to determine instruction for the upcoming skills and standards.
I love the part that is very prescriptive for the individual child and what they need and what the gaps are. It talked about a five, or you talked about a five-day plan. And I know it's differentiation throughout the plan, but is there an accelerant and remediation after day one?
So, within that teacher dashboard on the prerequisites report, there's also one for comprehension checks. So it'll give the teachers a link to say, okay, if students have done well at this, this is a recommended activity that they can complete, just like it would for students who are not necessarily on grade level.
So for your students who really may thoroughly understand that subject, you don't have to spend five days going over something they already know. But for that student who needs five days, they'll have it, okay. Of course, that's the differentiation. Thank you. Okay, and I know this is a crazy question, but this was always a problem. Do we get extra consumables for students who use, who may lose their book? Or something of that sort?
This first order will be based on the numbers we have with some padding. However, as time goes on and the numbers fluctuate, then we'll be able to move textbooks around depending on where they're needed. But as of right now, the plan is to order based on the number we have with some room for growth.
Okay, perfect. Sounds good. I, I like it. Looks good.
I, I have a question too. My, mine is basically a com, a comment. Totally love the program that y'all, you're suggesting for tonight. I want to know, when it says, in terms of the back-to-school training for teachers, the intense part, because to me, it's, for it to be very effective, teachers have to know how to use it so that they can use it to the full extent in terms of what it, what it does. Because I really like all the, I really like all that, the diagnostic stuff that's continuing all the time. So teachers will know where their kids are. It's a continuous thing. I really love that. And it also provides a lot of resources for these kids. So teachers have to know how to use it, know what all is available, because the diagnostic part is there continually as kids work. So, that back-to-school intense training, is that those four days that are pre-planning?
We haven't narrowed down the schedule at this point, but it is expected to be sometime during pre-planning. And it's supposed to be an intensive training. We know teachers aren't going to get it all during that time, but it's going to be an ongoing process. But our sup, our plan is to make sure that they're as prepared as they can be to effectively use the program once school starts.
Thank you. What was the date you're going to roll out?
During pre-planning.
What is that?
Before, before-
For the-
The rollout, the launch.
If all goes well, it'll be during post-planning.
Which is?
Last-
The last two teachwork, May 24th and 25th?
Okay.
If I'm not mistaken. The last two teacher work, May twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth, if I'm not mistaken.
That was voluntary.
Early adopters.
That's voluntary though. The other one is, man, that was-
What was that, Ms. Butler?
I was just saying, it sounded from the presentation that the launch was voluntary. It said, didn't you have a turn, a word voluntary?
No ma'am, I used a, a preview. It'll just be a preview, and it, all t- teachers will still be on contract then, so it will be an expectation.
It is an expectation, okay, thank you.
I, I, two points I'd like to make. You mentioned Ms. Chambers about the five-day plan and so on that. Within that, we're utilizing this in the scope and the framework of the gradual release model that we've been implementing for a number of years, and then also incorporating our personalized learning initiative. So it's all embedded in there. It's all one cohesive program that will work together in both the framework and the, the instructional model we're using, as well as the personalized learning effort. So it's all gonna be very, very cohesive.
Well, and the second point, I just want to thank Mr. Deloche and all of our teachers, because they have put in a lot of time and study on their own, obviously, to go through the program and come forward with the most, with the best recommendation that's available. So I thank them very much.
I do have one more follow-up question. So it really will be just like our introduction, because after people are gonna go home for the summer.
Right.
And so if, if we're gonna be ready to, you know, to kick off in August using this new adoption, what, what's going to be in place for the thirty-one elementary schools? That's a lot of, uh, building and operating all at the same time. What, help me-
So the plan right now is-
And I'm asking simply because I want to understand the support. Because this is wonderful, and it's, you know, I'm sure past time, and, and to Dr. Lewis's point, thank you all for all the hard work. But in, I, in order for it to be successful and people to not be discouraged and get back into the old habits of, you know, teaching them how, how we left off in May, because they're, you know, teachers are working toward a goal. And what, how is that going to look, the support?
So as of right now, and we haven't, you know, ironed out all the details, because we only recommend it at this point. But ideally, that launch training would be done in clusters, because it's hard to get thirty-two schools and have one person from curriculum associates come train those schools. So we cluster the schools so that we can maybe do all the kindergarten teachers in the west region at one time, and the kindergarten teachers in the central region, and then the east region. And then our back-to-school training would look more of the same, but that training would be more in-depth. And then throughout the course of the year, we'd seek support from curriculum associates to make sure that they are providing that ongoing and consistent support. And typically, at the beginning of the school year, like for this past year, for teachers who needed additional support, I offer after-school PD hours, or I went to schools and provided, you know, support during grade level meetings, just to make sure we're meeting the needs where they are, or meeting the teachers where they are, meeting their needs. But there will be, or we have the expectation that there will be ongoing support throughout the-
And that's important. I, I guess that's, um, for me, because I'm so, um, I lack all this technology training. Because I really like this pro- I really like this, um, what did you tell me to call it? I'm sorry. I was saying, I truly like this adoption. And as I see it, it can be very, 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 very impactful for our kids. But, um, and I, and because I am so technology-challenged, this is why I'm trying to figure out, that's why I know Ms. Green isn't though, but, um, the support that, the, the support that we have, and if, and I see her asking a question, that makes me even more nervous, because she isn't. She's, uh, you know, and so I was just-
She's trying to say, I don't know what I'm talking about.
Yeah, I know, no.
Okay.
I say you aren't challenged. I am challenged, technology, you aren't. So when I see you concerned also, that makes me even more nervous. That's, that's the only thing I'm saying.
Yep.
Because like I said, this is, to me, I, I, I really like what I've heard here about this adoption. What all it can do, especially that the diagnostic part is ongoing. Teachers have this, they, they have all these assessments, they have, they have resources to pull, they have all these checks, you know, all the way through. So, and I know we can't, you know, I know it's, it's hard to just say exactly what can be done right now. But that's our concern.
So I know Mr. Seifer wants to say something.
Yeah, I, I think to answer to your question, Ms. Green, is that the access to the material and the, and the, and the platform for the teachers will be done during that post-planning. So they have a, they can access it, navigate it, they'll be trained to navigate that. And then o- over the course of the summer, be able to provide some opportunities. You know, certainly, Mr. Delo- Deloche will be able to, um, potentially set up conversational Zoom sessions with teachers to help facilitate some more understanding of the product. But the real in-depth piece will be done during pre-planning. But they'll also, they'll have access throughout the summer to navigate the, uh, the platform and go through it and, and be able to have access to it is key.
So Mr. Deloche, you cannot get sick? You cannot have a cold? You cannot go on vacation, since you are the one man show for this?
But that's also, we have, we have the opportunity to, uh, to work with curriculum associates to be able to provide sessions as well, uh, over the course of the summer. I don't think there's gonna be any problem with teachers, and if I know teachers, teachers will want to get into it and dive into it and make sure they understand it. So we'll have opportunities for them over the course of the summer, uh, if they need to have access to it. And, and want to ask questions, we'll develop sessions for that.
But just having it available for teachers to manipulate it. You know, because teachers can figure stuff out, and, you know, they can, if they are manipulated when they, when it comes to the intense training, they will have some prior knowledge. So it would make the actual training go more smoothly. But that's, that's very good what you said, if it's gonna be available for them to manipulate during the summer.
We, we want them to be very engaged with the, with the platform and to be able to use it efficiently and effectively. Uh, that's key.
That's what we want.
And if, and if there, if there are struggles, that, that's what we built in sessions throughout the year. And as well as look at the data associated with it, to, just to your point. If there are issues at particular sites, we can go out and, and, and address those issues, if there's a lack of understanding of how to use the product, and do some observations in classrooms.
And we also want to invite teachers, as they do have full access over the summer, and they do have questions and problems, we're gonna collect those, and so if we see some thematic issues that we can then inform curriculum associates when they come and do their back-to-school training, you know, these are the questions we've gotten. We also have from the adoption committee, a member of every school who has looked at this in depth. Plus, we're gonna train academic coaches early, so that they do have those people in the school. Should, you know, we need them to intervene before we can get to them. But we've done this too with SAVIS, with our literacy adoption, and, and that has really worked well, that coach and feedback model. So we're going to do the same thing with curriculum associates, and they have promised that in their professional development.
Any more questions?
Thank you all very much. Our next, our next item is very interesting. The early high school, early high school admission. We're doing the early high school admission.
This is the early high school initiative. We're very excited about this and look forward to presenting this to you about a new option, new opportunity for some of our middle school students to connect with their high schools. So I'll turn it over to Mr. Battles.
Good evening, Jeff Battles, Director of Athletics. And when you see this, I know, I know you're probably gonna say, why is he talking? But I, I drew the short straw.
Thank you. That's exactly what I was thinking.
Earlier this year, we, we were brought with an idea of, um, what can we do to get our middle school students transitioned to high school? I'm, I don't want to use the word better, but more efficiently. And so we put together a team to start asking that question. And our, our team was pretty in-depth. We, we had principals from various high schools and various middle schools who could give us feedback. The extended team brought in DIS, Student Services, uh, Communications, o- other people who, again, could give us various feedback. We met several times throughout the year, coming up with ideas, revamping those ideas, coming up with new ideas, to present to you a, the, the, what we would like to do going forward on allowing our kids to transition a little easier. So what is the scope of the project we're looking at? The purpose of the project is to assign students during their seventh grade year to the high school they plan on attending in ninth grade. The committee believes that allowing the eighth graders to participate in various activities at the high school will allow them to acclimate quicker once they start their freshman year. So how does this work? Well, as you, as most of you know, right now, as an eighth grader, going into the fall of your eighth grade year, you apply, you can apply for a magnet, um, position at a high school, at one of our local high schools. Those who don't apply for magnets in the spring of their eighth grade year are then assigned to high school based on their zone school. So all we're trying to do is move that up a year. So what we would like to do is in the fall, magnet, magnet, magnet applications will open in October, and students in the seventh grade will then be able to apply for that magnet application for their high school. If you don't apply, that's fine, just like normal. In the spring each year, students are assigned to their zone school. So the student in seventh grade would be assigned to their high school that they, the, the attendance zone they live in, their high school. Beginning that summer, okay, that summer going into their eighth grade year, there are various activities that they would be allowed to go in and participate with the high school they've been accepted slash assigned to. Okay? So there, there are some questions that came up when we're having these conversations with the principals. Is there a different process between a seventh grader and an eighth grader when we're talking about magnet applications? And, and the answer is yes and no. It varies, because our, our high school magnet programs all vary in their application process. So depending on your school would depend on what you vary, and the principals will have to adjust depending on the eighth graders. For instance, if you have a test, you, you pull normally from a bank, a question bank for your test. Well, if you, if, for the seventh grade test, you're gonna have to pull some different questions. You got to pull from a seventh grade te- test bank instead of an eighth grade test bank. So there is some changes that could happen at schools, but for the most part, the process is the same. What if I get accepted to multiple magnet programs? Again, same thing as the current process we have. If you apply to multiple magnet programs and you get in, you would then have to make a choice. Can I change my decision before I enter the ninth grade? Yes, the process is open again for eighth graders who might not know as a seventh grader what they want to do. As an eighth grader, they can go through the magnet process, or again, be assigned to their high school. So what are some constraints that we might face as we move into this? How do eighth grade students get to the high school they are as- assigned? That's a constraint we have. Later on, the next topic will answer some of the questions that we might have. So we, we haven't really gotten into the weeds of answering that question, because depending on what buses are available depends on the answer. So we'll, we'll have answers for that. We just don't have them right now. We think a constraint will be getting this new information out to the community and out to our seventh grade parents. We're working with Kimberly Wright and our Communications Department on how we would do that to the best of our ability. But that, we do see that as a challenge. And then what happens if an eighth grader, you know, changes their mind? You know, our, our kids are young, they change their mind sometimes. Like I said before, they can reapply. You know, if an eighth grade, if a seventh grader doesn't apply at all and gets assigned to a zone school, they can apply for a magnet their eighth grade. All those things are still open. None of that closes. We're just opening it up to our seventh graders. So what's the timeline? We, we met as a committee, we came up with this, we presented it to Cabinet. We made a few, few adjustments after Cabinet, then we brought it to our general admin. Last month, we presented it to General Admin. Now we're, we're here presenting this to you. We would like to start in May, at the end of May, early June, communicating this out to our community stakeholders, and then come back again in August and, and re-sending all that information out. October is when the magnet process opens, and the seventh graders would begin applying when, if they would like to. And then March, April is when the ones who do not apply for a magnet would be assigned to their zone school for the fall of twenty twenty-four.
I have a question.
Have you said it?
So, yeah. So you're talking about August twenty twenty-three?
No ma'am.
August twenty twenty-four?
Yes ma'am.
Okay.
I'm talking about current s- current sixth graders is who this would affect. Because they would be seventh graders in the fall.
That's August twenty twenty-three.
Yes ma'am, yes ma'am. I'm talking about them applying in October twenty twenty-three. Yes ma'am.
Okay. And so also in October, November, eighth graders will be applying?
That is correct.
So in, in twenty twenty-four, will eighth graders, we, will, will it, is the expectation that if you didn't apply to the magnet program in your seventh grade year? And you're an eighth grader, because, you know, we've been doing this since we've had magnet programs. It's gonna take a minute for people to adjust. Their expectation traditionally will be eighth grade year. Somebody's gonna miss the multiple plethora of communication. Many people are going to miss it.
Yes ma'am.
So how, are, have you, have you all thought that through? Are you ma- putting some provisions in place before we start getting all the phone calls? Because even in our current tradition of how magnet school applications are communicated and applied for and processed out, and students are selected, parents still have a lot of questions about why did my child get selected? And so now we're introducing another component that strictly services athletic purposes only, nothing to do with-
That's a negative, ma'am. That's a negative.
That's a negative.
No ma'am, we, this is, this is gonna affect our bands. We're, we're really pushing the-
Extracurricular then is the appropriate word. That strictly, um, addresses our extracurricular, um, activities. And for the record, I, I really don't have a problem with it. I'm just concerned about, um, the eighth graders who don't apply in the seventh grade.
Are they at a disadvantage, you're saying?
Yeah, I, I'm just talking about the disadvantages. The eighth graders who do, who do not apply to a magnet program in the seventh grade. They'll have an op- yeah, the mag- so you're saying, are you saying that the, they will also have an opportunity in the eighth grade? Well, you know, the seat's gonna be gone, right?
That, that is a discussion that we had with the committee, and, and it was a long discussion. And the, the way that it was explained to me by the principals was every seat's not filled at the beginning anyway. They, they leave seats for transfer students, for military students, there, there are seats left there. So going into this process, they would, they would not fill up, say if I have a hundred magnet spots for the twenty twenty-four school year, I wouldn't fill all of them with seventh graders. I would fill maybe seventy of them with seventh graders, or fifty of them with, again, it will vary by school, I'm assuming. But that would be up to the principal, how many of those magnet spots they filled, and then they would, they would be able to allow eighth graders in. But all of them would not be filled up with seventh graders, so there would be spots for eighth graders the next year who applied.
Problematic.
So I'm, I'm trying to figure out why, I don't know, maybe I'm missing something. I'm trying to figure out why we're doing this. I know you said something about-
This, this is purely for extracurriculars, yes ma'am. There's, there's no hiding that.
Okay, so, okay, so this is an extracurricular program. What are we lacking that we, why do we need to do this? What part of our extracurriculum, what are we trying to enhance in high school? What are we trying to enhance? I see a disadvantage for eighth graders. And some parents may not want their kids, their seven, eight, eighth grade, to be co-mingling with high school people. Have we, do we consider that at all?
Yes ma'am. That, that option has been really sp- well spoken out. Um, this is voluntary, so they, they do not have to participate, we're not, we're not forcing them to participate. This, this gives the ones who want to participate the, the option to do that.
And to connect, and to connect to their school earlier.
I just, it's just gonna be a disadvantage for my, for eighth grade students and I, to call, um, Mr. Nelson, is that, don't, don't we have, okay, so, can we connect in a way like, um, can we, in, uh, Ms. Nelson, in the eighth grade, do students still declare a major to, with the counselors? Um, cause that's more in terms of a major.
Their area of interest.
In the eighth grade, don't, do students still declare, meet with the counselor to declare something like a major? Or, um, they declare their career path, in, in that career path?
We have, um-
Do they still do that?
In the career pathways, according to the bridge bill, um, they really start in sixth grades, looking at those career pathways, um, to make a decision of which high school that will be a great fit for them. Um, but we know students change their minds, it happens. But, we do, um, that is not, they're, they're not held to that choice.
In the eighth grade, I know they, they kind of discuss it a little bit in the formal grades, but when I was teaching, because that's been three years ago, in the eighth grade, it was supposed to be a more serious thing, I know that they're not held- In the eighth grade, I thought it was a more serious kind of thing, when the counselor sits down now. And then, I know they do it in the era grade, cause even you can go back in kindergarten, supposedly, we're supposed to be discussing career paths from kindergarten on up.
Right.
But in the eighth grade, I thought.
Right.
So, I'm just saying, how, if we could connect this with, um, some way with their, when they determine what they want to do, you know, uh, I just don't like, uh, e- um, until I can see the benefit of it, of the, I see a disadvantage for eighth grade students, that's what I'm seeing also.
Uh, well, and one of the a- advantages, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Okay, not that I'm saying to you, I'm just saying that's another way, I'm just saying that's another way to connect with the high schools without putting that disadvantage on, on, on our eighth grade students. Because, Mr., um-
Battles.
Battles, you're saying that, um, there are spaces left for military, for transfers and those, but those spaces are still have to be left for military, for transfers.
Get back to the microphone.
So, those spaces aren't really available for military and transfers.
Well, what I was, what I was saying, Ms. Buckner, is if there's a hundred magnet app, spots, right, right this second, the way we do it, a school might only accept ninety eighth graders, and they would leave ten spots. That, that number will change with this, but I can't give you an exact number because it would be different by school. Because each school will operate a little bit differently. But, there will be more open spots because of that, but I don't, I don't see this dis-
In a, in a, in addition to the military.
In, in addition to, yes ma'am, because they would still keep those open.
They would have those spots available, and then they will have some spots available for-
For eighth graders.
Eighth grade students who have not declared a major.
That's correct. But I don't see it as a disadvantage, and, and most of our group didn't see it as a disadvantage. We, we saw it as a way for students who kind of know what they want to do and kind of know where they want to go, you know, they, they can go ahead and have that opportunity to, to start acclimating themselves to that area.
So, this sounds to me like, so our magnet programs are really geared strictly towards, um, particular academic interest focus.
Yes.
This proposal seems to me, um, a way to include people with the athletic or extra, other extracurricular focus, um, to ha- to have an advantage. If you got some eighth grader that's an excellent soccer player, that, you can see that potential in the seventh grade, we're gonna go ahead and get him assigned someplace. That, that's the benefit that I see, right? And I, and, and to me, it's, you know, it's mixing two things together because our magnet programs are strictly academic focused.
Well, it's not just our magnet programs. It, it also, i- is also our students who are just assigned to a high school ba- based on their attendance zone. And, and that, the sa- it, it's not just the magnet programs we're focused on. We're, we're, but we have to include the magnet programs because it is a huge part of our high schools. But, the, the attendance zone students, their spring of their seventh grade year would be given their, their high school assignment at that point. And so, during the eighth grade summer, they can start working with the high schools too. So, it, we're, we're not trying to take anything away from the magnet and the academic part of the magnet, we're trying to include it in the program so, so that students who, we have sixth grade students who know where they want to go to high school. They, they know that already. So, why can't we allow them, you know, a year early to, to look at that? And then, for, for instance, if we have some students who are big into the marching band, most of our middle schools don't ha- do not have a marching band program. So, this would allow them as an eighth grader to go be a part of that marching program and, and see kind of if, if they are that serious about it, or if they just thought they were before they saw what practice looks like and competition looks like and all that. So, it lets them acclimate a little bit more there.
So, how is this going to help, um, middle school programs that already struggle to get kids to participate in band or chorus? Or how is it going to impact their athletics if the eighth grader can go to high school and play? What's, what's, how is it going to impact the middle school programs?
This is for-
Those children are not participating with their peers at their middle school and they're participating at the high school level?
The, the opportunities that will be available are opportunities not offered at middle school.
For example?
District wide. For example, softball is not offered district wide in our middle schools. So, if a young lady plays softball, she could then go and try out for the high school team and play JV. If a young man plays baseball, baseball's not offered at our middle schools. It would allow that to happen. We, again, we don't have marching band in middle school. We do have some band things that they would still be a part of, they would choose one or the other. But, the, the marching band part of it is different from the orchestra band, if I'm saying that correctly, Dr. Lewis.
Concert band, but, yeah.
So, so, so football, basketball, the programs that are offered at middle school would not be eligible for this early admission?
They, they would not be able to do that, no ma'am.
Okay. So, what's, what's- Enhancement is not in place of?
So, what's eligible, what's, 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 what, what are the eligibility, um, what sports, or what is eligible here?
Well, it, it would, it would be softball, it would be baseball, it'd be wrestling, it would be swimming. Um, we, we could get into some J R T C stuff with the, with the rifle, and we, we haven't delved a whole lot there, but I'm just throwing it out there. Um, we, again, the marching band part, and there's some other pieces. You know, like I said, we haven't gotten to the weeds of all of this yet be- because we're in the early stages of planning still.
So, when I, um, my, um, my questions are basically for the, um, basically for the, uh, magnet programs. So, let's say I was a seventh grader, I said I was, I have applied to go to, um, let's say I applied to go to Columbus High, and let's say at the, um, seven, or, or any magnet. And so, I have been going in the eighth grade, I have been practicing with the school, and then come ninth, ninth grade, I'm not eligible for these, for the programs, or the magnet prog- program that, that the district let them in to in the, um, seventh and eighth grade. So, this is problematic to me if I have, if we have, wha- what screening is done in the seventh grade for the, um, school that a person is trying to go to?
A- again, the, the magnet application process is different at all of our high schools for all our different magnet programs.
Right.
So, I, I, there's not a single answer there for you, but all the, all of the programs have an ap- application that looks at various parts of the student, the whole child, not just a GPA or a class. They, they look at different things in that. So, I'm assuming that would answer your question there, but, but I'll also say that-
All of them look at, uh, your grades.
They all look at your grades, yes.
They all look at your grades.
But, but some of them are not just your grades, there's other pieces that go to it.
Well, most of them, uh, as they become more, uh, academic, they look at grades and behavior. They look at, uh, and some even cut, cut you off if you've had one behavioral incident. And then, you have been practicing with this, this, um, the school, whatever, swimming for seventh and eighth grade. I don't know, I just have to think about this, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm just-
It's okay, I, I understand, but there i- there is a process we have right now where if you are in a magnet program at a high school and, and you get in trouble, that magnet status is revoked and you go back to your attendance zone. So, that's already a process we have, so I, I don't think anything would change there.
Yeah, that's a process we have in all of them, but, but I'm talking about, it's already revoked before you get in there. It's revoked before you get in there.
I, I wouldn't be able to answer that question.
I mean, I'm just saying that's true, that's not an answer to it. If, if they don't accept you, it's revoked.
That is correct. But, but, but you wouldn't practice with a team you weren't accepted or assigned to?
Yeah, you, you, yeah, that's what I'm, what criteria are we using to assign seventh grade, seventh grade, grades, uh, those look, uh, that can look different. The seventh grade, even seventh grade, you're not even taking algebra. I mean, some students are, if you're extremely smart, but in seventh grade, uh, some programs may require that you have certain maths. And in seventh grade, you don't have the pre-recu- pre-requisite skills for some of our magnet programs. And, so, it just, uh-
And, and that's where-
There is potential for-
Yeah, and that's where we talked about the, 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 the process for seventh graders would, would be a little different than eighth graders at most of our magnet programs. That's, that's, we, we mentioned that earlier.
Okay, thank you, any more questions? Kia?
Okay, sorry if I-
Oh, Laurie, I'm sorry.
If I re- uh, sorry, and Kia said I could go next. Um, in case I ask something that's already been said, I'm sorry, I'm trying to kind of make it a little more succinct. So, seventh grader, and I get a lot more fluid if it's your school, zone school. So, I don't mean to only talk about magnet people, it's just that's the kind of hazier gray area. Um, so, only seventh graders that get to do this early application, I hate to sound like college, are the ones that are trying to do one of these extracurricular activities. Or can any seventh grader go and apply early?
An- any seventh grader can apply early. It has, it has really, any seventh grader can apply early. Um, and, and going back to the point, if, if we don't have a, um, a science team in middle school, if we don't, if we don't have a certain academic team in middle school and it's offered at that high school, they, they can go be a part of that. So, it, it can tie into multiple things, like, like Ms. Green said, it's extracurricular, it's, it's not just athletics. Um, and so, some of the kids who have never done a sport in their life, and, and it, they're all here, you know, they, they can find stuff in high schools too that they want to do.
I guess all I'm saying is, is the student that just, cause I, I think in my mind, I was thinking only the students that were trying to apply early to take advantage of one of these extracurriculars in their eighth grade year, where who would apply in seventh grade? So, you're saying we're pretty much bumping up the magnet process for a year. While we will still leave some spaces for later eighth grade, most, every child now will go ahead and test if that's what's done for their magnet program, or send in their resume.
That would be, that would, that would be the, the object at the end of this rainbow, is to have the majority of our seventh graders, um, if, if they want to apply for a magnet, apply in seventh grade.
Okay, so that makes me feel better, cause I was thinking, oh, it's kind of like, you know, now, a bunch of kids are gonna say, oh, I, I want to go do this to help me get in sooner, and we don't in any way want to do that.
No.
Um, sorry, my circular discussion. Um, you did mention it was only certain extracurriculars, I mean, but like, a kid that plays football in middle school, would they now possibly be able to practice in the spring of their eighth grade year with the football team of the high school they were going to?
We don't allow eighth graders to practice football in their spring of their eighth grade year purely for, um, safety concerns. Eighth, eighth graders are allowed to try out for softball, they're allowed to try out for volleyball, they're now allowed to try out for flag football. But, we, we hold back on football for pure safety concerns.
So, I guess there are, okay, cause I guess that would be the question. Some people would say, oh, well, hey, that person's getting to go ahead and participate in their sport. At the high school level, I'm still having to stay in my eighth grade sport. So, there are very easily defined reasons of why-
Yes ma'am.
We do not allow some to do it and some to do others. Um, and I understand that, cause yes, an eighth grader to a senior is a very bigger physicality. Um, across the board at a lot of different sports. Sorry, my glasses. Um, you've answered some of them, so I'm going back. Um, are we trying to make this decision in a week, or is this something that sits for thirty days? That's probably not you a question, that's probably Dr. Lewis's question.
Well, we were, the sooner we can, the more communication. So, it depends on how much communication you want to get out. We were thinking about it because of the process of communication.
We, we are not in a rush.
We can wait.
We, we can wait till August if you want to.
You know, kind of question.
We're trying to get it out now so that people hear about it. Um, like Ms. Green said, it doesn't matter how much communication we send, some of it's gonna slip through the cracks anyway. But, we, the earlier we get it out, the better, but if we wait till June, if we wait till July, we're, we're fine with that.
I think my recommendation would be, just, I'm only one person, but, that we wait thirty days, just cause I do think there's a lot of thought in, in getting head, I mean, cause if somebody walked to me tomorrow and asked me to explain it to them, I'd still be struggling.
We, we are not in a rush whatsoever.
And we're not the only district doing this.
That was my next question, if, I think if we could get some more information on other districts that have done it and kind of, I, I just think if we can get more meat to it, that will help us understand how it works. Um, and then, I heard transportation, and you know, I'm not really fired up about this change of be- bell schedule. So, it does give me pause that I don't want in any way this change of bell schedule to be so that we can now transport eighth graders to after-school activities at a high school. Which is what it felt like.
I can't talk about it until a, a decision's made there, but, um, but we would, we feel the need to transport, if, if a student was participating in something, we would feel the need probably to help them get there. Now, we can make it where there's no transportation allowed and, and parents are on their own to get there, but I don't think that serves the whole community well. But, again, we don't have an answer to that question, so I really can't address it until we get more in the weeds of the process, which I might can come back in June and, and give you more information.
Just, you know, feels kind of, anyway. I can save some of that for my bell schedule discussion. Um, and, and practically speaking, if you're taking a child home and you're now taking them to a high school, that really might not be that much of a extra burden on transportation. I just didn't want to hear the idea that we might have certain buses allocated to just transport children that were participating in these programs.
From, from my understanding-
That would concern me.
If, if, if we did move forward, and I might be speaking out of turn, Dr. Anderson, I apologize. But, from my understanding, a, a middle school bus, if, if the bell schedule were to move forward, a middle school bus would, would finish the middle school route and go to a high school to pick up.
Right, so they could just kind of stay-
In theory, they're gonna be there already.
Okay, I just was, cause I heard that-
So, it wouldn't be a special trip?
Well, I just kind of heard if we have availability of buses, and that made me kind of worried that we were trying to free up buses to do some-
If we do not change the bell schedule, I can tell you that buses will not be available. I can say that.
Okay, I think we, uh, Kia, sorry, and then I kind of dominated in your time.
Um, so I know with, um, you talked about band, and you talked about baseball, and are there any other sports?
There are, there's, there's several, but I, I, I can't, I don't know them all right here off the top of my head. Like I said, we hadn't gotten to the weeds and came up with the exact process yet.
Are they regulated at all, like, um, the Georgia High School Association?
Yes ma'am, Georgia High School has rules for eighth graders who play junior varsity sports.
Okay, so, are we saying if we back it up to seventh grade, is that gonna be feasible for, within the guidelines of G H S A?
Yes ma'am, there's eighth graders who play varsity, or it's junior varsity, they're not eligible for varsity, but there's eighth graders who play junior varsity for the high school all over the state of Georgia.
So, really, the seventh graders would be considered eighth graders because they would be? They're not gonna play until they're in age of-
That's right, this would allow them to be admitted, to, to be accepted by their eighth grade.
Okay. And since we're going to, my vote would be to table this because I know that more questions- And since we're going to, my vote would be to table this, because I know that more questions are gonna come up. This is my first time hearing about it, um, in detail. And I would like to hear more about the academic, uh, component.
Okay.
For example, are there other academic, um, clubs and programs that occur in the summer that students would be able to take, um, advantage of? And then academically, do the high schools have any concern with these, with the magnet spots being filled so early? From an academic perspective, because they do have a criteria that, that they may meet in seventh, but by the end of eighth grade, they may not meet that same criteria.
Well, I, I think the, going back to Ms. McCray, the statement she made, the, the end goal would, would be to basically move what we do as eighth grade to seventh grade. And, and that might take a few years for us to get to, but part of getting there would be looking at the data and, and seeing what type of students you've let in as far as their academic performance and behavior performance and things of that nature, and, and how that translates to their eighth grade year, and then do, which, which, I guess prerequisites do you put on the ones that you are gonna let in as seventh graders?
See, that's my-
So it, it is a process.
That's my concern, because then it sounds like we're changing, each school has their own criteria.
They do.
And so we may be tweaking that a little bit if we say we're gonna look at some other criteria in order to admit the seventh grade student.
The, the schools would be critique, would, would, would be-
Responsible for accepting-
Responsible for changing it on their own, yes ma'am.
And, and withdrawing the, um, acceptance, because they have that process now.
Okay.
And logistically, when you come back with additional information, what does that look like? Do we have all the students in a computer, we go ahead and assign them, and the high schools will already know that this, this group of seventh graders will be coming to this high school?
Yes, so an infinite campus, which is our attendance, you know, which, which we use for a bunch of things, but the, an infinite campus, as a student, you, your twenty-four, twenty-five school year could be populated, and that is based off your attendance zone.
A year early, okay. All right.
I still have a lot of problems with this. Um,
I do too.
The, um, uh, only in terms of the magnet program. In terms of, of anything, um, in terms of the residential, I'm good. Okay, so you, you were saying that, you were saying that as Ms. McCray suggested that the seventh grader, the, uh, magnet schools use the seventh grade criteria. Uh, um, what I want to remind you is the seventh graders still have a whole year of academic skills or a whole year of school that they may need to be eligible for the high school criteria for, um, magnet placement. So this will put those kids in a disadvantage to be, to be, um, applied to some criteria that they should have a whole another year to get before, um, before that entrance procedure. It also gives an advantage to the swimmer, that these are the skills that you have, the swimmer, the softball, student who, um, may, uh, they have an advantage or of, uh, being accepted at some of the academic magnets and filling up slots that were already be taken for eighth, eighth grade students who had to apply later because they weren't, um, they have not taken the, uh, test because maybe they felt they were not eligible or not ready to take a test for a placement at that time. And also have concerns with if y'all in fact at all tapped into any parents who were, um, that y'all consider that you do any kind of, uh, discussion with parents, you know, and, and you did say it's volunteer, you know, this is a volunteer program, you did say that. But we still would like to know how our parents feel about their eighth grade students, their middle school students mixing and mingling with high schools, high, high school students, so. Anyway, they already said we're gonna table it. I don't know how long we're gonna table it, somebody said a month, you know, it can be tabled for a long time as far as I'm concerned. Thank you.
Yes ma'am, thank you.
Are there any more questions? That concludes the education, um, report.
Uh, thank you, Ms. Buckner. Next, uh, policy committee, five point zero one is the school start time. Uh, Mr. Anderson, this is, we pushed this back for waiting on whatever updates that you have. Yes, sir.
Thank you. I'm Travis Anderson, Chief Operations Officer. And one and two, we're not gonna do the presentation tonight, because we've seen that several times, so I wanted to just give you an update on a couple of things. The purpose of the school start time initiative is to make sure that we are developing a school schedule that supports academic success for our older students. And even though the presentation we just saw seems as if it coincides with the school start time initiative, they are two separate initiatives. So this initiative is solely for supporting our older students with a schedule that is based upon the recommendation of the CDC and American Academy of Pediatrics. So it's not to support the extracurricular, curricular activities and the initiative that we just saw. Just wanted to make that clear. Uh, we had our final community forum last week, it was very well attended. We had seventy-two members there of our community, and many of them were Spanish speakers, so we recognized the need to have this opportunity to deliver information both English and Spanish. We'll continue to do that, we do want to make sure that we thank our community partner, the Pentecostal Church of God I Am, which hosted us and gave the translation, which we really appreciate, to be able to provide that service to our community. For the most part, the community, the presentation and the feedback that we received is very similar to what we received before, and you've received that information. So that's all that I have to say, and I'm available for questions.
Are there any additional questions?
Just me. I continue to struggle with this, as a lot of people know. Um, and I've gone to the forums and I've listened and I've heard, um, all of it a lot. Yeah, my concern is that we keep talking about the high schoolers, and you did provide me with all the studies, like I asked, and I did peruse them. Um, you know, interestingly, they all supported what we were angling at. I, I do think there are other studies out there that maybe don't, but, you know, they did continuously talk about middle schoolers too, and we are now making middle schoolers, you know, a lot earlier, they're no longer near the eight-thirty time that is recommended for adolescents, um, which incorporates, I think it said twelve to eighteen. Um, so my concern is that. And then my other concern is, is when we've kind of said, well, can we tweak this a little bit and make it not so bad for the high schoolers? Because I am hearing a lot from the high schoolers, from the teachers, from parents, from students, um, about it in various capacities of why it doesn't work well for them and their concerns. You know, the answer always then is about transportation. You know, I say, can we just kind of start at ten or fifteen minutes earlier? You know, it's like, no, then we can't achieve these transportation goals. So it feels very much like a transportation change. Um, because otherwise, I don't think they'd have to be spread as much apart. And it just concerns me, because while I know sixty percent of our children ride buses, a lot of them do actually get to school on time and everything runs smoothly. I know we've seen the numbers of the ones that get there late, but that really only equates to, you know, ten percent of our population, and we're making changes that drastically change things for all of our scho- school population. Um, and we don't really know, I mean, we say, I've heard you say it repeatedly, we're doing this, and if we had it this year, it would all work very well, but we don't know what changes it's gonna make. We don't know how many middle school bus riders that's gonna change based on earlier times. We don't know how many high school bus riders it might change based on it. And then it was also interesting to me, because I keep hearing like the flip of certain things, like high school is our biggest attendance zone, so that's why we need them to go third in the morning, yet somehow in the afternoon, even though we're gonna be really late getting our biggest attendance zone, or I might not be wording it right, but transportation home, we're gonna have free up buses to help do all these other things. And so I keep feeling like I hear one pro that should kind of be a con on the other end, but somehow it's also a pro on the other end. So I don't think you're really gonna be able to answer my questions, um, other than if there is some way we could tweak it and make it not so hard on the high schoolers. Um, I would like to see any more emails that we've gotten through the website. And then my biggest thing too is we are rezoning in a year, and it just seems like we are really making huge changes before we even know what changes are gonna come from the rezoning.
Yeah, I'd like to address that if I may, last month we talked about that, and it was almost presentative, if this, then that, or whatever, it's not a question of this or that, it's this and that. Well, no, I, well, I just want to make sure we understand, it's not this or that. It's a this and that to make it work. Okay, that's, I want to make sure we-
Are you saying like a phase one, phase two?
This is like phase one, that would be a phase two. Um, it, and, and I think it's important to also realize that we're, these are experts working in these fields. I respect what they have, have done. Um, they have done this, the routers, that's what they do, as I said last time, they do this every day, all day. It's not gonna be easy for any of us, I've been in schools, working schools for forty-three years, and transportation is not something I'm an expert in, so I rely on people who are. And I trust and understand that they know what they're doing. Um, and they're telling us, based on the resources we have, this is what they need to have in order for us to get kids. And I understand the whole idea about ten percent, but that's ten percent. And if you're one child that's sitting there on that bus two hours one way, we gotta do better than that. We cannot do that to children anymore. And if we know better, we should do better. It's just that simple. And leadership is not easy sometimes, it's not popular, but it, it is doing the right thing for the right reason. And we're doing these things right, and, and I will just say that just, just today, an article has come out, nine, uh, states legislatures are considering, um, mandating a later start time for high school. I, it's not, we didn't know they were doing that, uh, I didn't know that. But there are nine states and several large school districts, because of the anxiety and lack of sleep that a lot of our teenagers are experiencing, that's only been exacerbated as a result of the pandemic. So I think in talking about mental health, these are things that we should be considering that do have an overall impact on our children. And I am certainly not, um, deaf to the concerns that come up, but so far, most of the issues I've heard are individual concerns about their dance lessons or things of that nature, and I certainly appreciate that, and I've said from the beginning, there will be inconvenience. I don't doubt that. But there was inconvenience before when we made the schedule change back wherever it was, and then put middle school last. Um, and that has been problematic from the beginning, um, in many respects. Uh, but this was one thing we've looked at, what the research has told us, we've tried to go with what is the right thing for the right reason. A byproduct is the transportation, um, obviously. And I know how can, much concern there was in this board earlier in the year about these very same issues. How many kids are getting to school fifteen, twenty minutes late every day? How many kids are leaving, being left at school, um, late in the afternoon? How many kids are not getting home before six o'clock? How many kids are having to ride and get, uh, get to their bus stop in the morning before six o'clock and then ride two hours to and from school? I heard all those things, and as a board, you directed me to work on trying to resolve that issue, and this is one of the ways in which we can do it. Um, we've been working on recruiting, you heard we've recruited sixty-eight bus drivers, but that still isn't enough, and we've never been fully staffed, to my recollection, since I've been here, uh, that I know of. So it's not gonna, not gonna be something that's gonna get better tomorrow or overnight. So we're trying to do the things that are this and that, that will get us to a place beneficial for all of our students. And I do recognize, uh, our, our athletic coaches, um, have been working on trying to get this, some of the things are not being mentioned, you know, some of our middle school coaches now can come coach at the high school. There are things, there are benefits we haven't talked about, because we've tried to stay away from all those things. But one of the things we did talk about in the presentation is mental health, obesity, uh, depression that has gone along and has been exacerbated, all because of sleep deprivation that we know associates to the earlier start times. So I just feel like it's important for us to look at the entire picture and, and realize that when we talked about, out of five community forums, we've had a total of about a hundred and thirty-five people, some of whom are duplicates because they attended multiple forums. I think it's important to put that in context of thirty thousand students, and by extension, sixty thousand parents. So I just want to make sure we look at that from the totality. What you decide is what we decide, but I'm trying to address some of the concerns that were mentioned about the after-school programs, that we can now address through this pro, uh, through this change if we do that. Looking at these kids who are coming, getting to school late, staying late in the afternoon, or having to ride on a bus in, or an amount of time to and from school. Those are the things that are concerning for me, and I think are concerned for you, uh, or have been expressed to me as a concern from the start of the school year. So, uh, this is not about this or that, it's about what we're doing that is in the right and the best interest for everybody and all concerned. I do understand will be an inconvenience, I've said that from the beginning, for some, for others, it's gonna be a benefit. And typically, you don't hear from the people who are agnostic about something or, or are happy about it. You hear about the people that are unhappy about any issue, I get that, I understand that. But loud does not mean many. And I just wanted to put that out there, because I think there are, in my speaking with people who've come up to me saying, I'm all for this, I think it's the right thing to do for kids. Or it is an inconvenience for me, but I know it's what we should be doing. So there's that other side of things that I want to, to make sure we do put out there. Whatever the board decides, of course, we're gonna do whatever we have to do. But I cannot sit here and tell you I can fix, I got a much better, uh, opportunity to fix some of the issues that we're dealing with, both from an academic improvement standpoint as well as transportation with this plan based on the experts' advice. And that's what we're trying to bring forward as a recommendation.
Yes, so this is the plan that you all have come up, um, with and given us. Do you have an alternative? If this particular plan does not move forward, or is the alternative that we still have students that are arriving to school forty-five minutes late, thirty minutes late, staying on the bus two hours, and things of that nature? Can you speak to that?
Yes, that is correct. So the plan that's put in place, again, the byproduct is transportation efficiencies. And so adjusting the schedule for the sole purpose of transportation efficiencies was never something that was discussed. It was solely discussed on doing what's best for students in their circadian rhythm, with the byproduct, transportation efficiencies. So we have not looked at simply adjusting the schedule to improve transportation, because that does not necessarily go along with our mission.
Is shortening the-
Is shortening the high school day an option? Since it's, um, and that's in light of another discussion, are we checking on that, or?
It's a very complicated matter. So shortening the high school day, and I'm going to yield to who? Keith?
Me.
I'll yield to Keith.
Okay, thank you.
So I think there, there's a couple, uh, options here. One is, if you shorten the high school day, then you're gonna address the, uh, the current schedule that we have out there that, that has-
Oh, glad you said it to somebody else.
It wasn't. So shortening the high school day, you're, you're looking at instructional time. Currently, we're on a seven-period day. Um, in, in seven out of our nine schools, the other two schools are on, uh, on block schedule. The seven-period days have fifty-minute, uh, fifty to fifty-five minute, uh, timeframes in there. Um, and, and that's based on individual schools. So the instructional minutes, if you're on a seven-period day, you have to have at least fifty minutes in those, uh, in those time periods. If you get below fifty minutes, then you're, you're certainly addressing, uh, um, the, the instructional time, and you're lessening the opportunity for, uh, providing quality instruction. Uh, when you, it's tough in a fifty-minute period to get what you need done. And I think if you talk to high school teachers, um, you will, you will see that. Um, in a ni- in, in the ninety-minute block, the fourth, that's three hundred and sixty minutes, uh, so, um, but, but again, that's just the instructional time. The three hundred and fifty minutes, uh, if that's a fifty-minute period, that's instructional time. Uh, that also adds- That also adds up to a hundred and fifty minutes of, a hundred and fifty hours of graduation. What says in the graduation rule, you're looking at a hundred and fifty minutes of, a hundred and fifty hours of course credit hours. A hundred and thirty-five hours for ninety-minute block classes. So that's, again, that's three hundred and sixty minutes, three hundred and fifty minutes. That doesn't include all the transition times. You've, you've seen that information. Generally, if you're, you don't want to go below five minutes of transition times. That's, that's, if you're going from one building, end of the building to the other in some of these high schools, it's very difficult to do that. If you're, if you're going to lessen the, the lunchtime, yeah, tho, those are all flexible times. But when you start talking about twenty-five minutes for lunch, then you, you're, you're running them in and out. You might not be able to address those, those lunch minutes. Then we have time in there for instructional extension time for students, increased learning time. You have.
Advisement.
The advisement periods. So all those accumulate into a high school schedule. Can you run high school? Yeah, the state requires three hundred and thirty minutes of six through twelve instructional time at a minimum. We don't want to do the minimum, in my opinion. But just from a, just from a seven-period day and a block-scheduled day, you're, you're, you're actually limited to the three hundred and fifty and three hundred and sixty minutes.
I appreciate you breaking it down because this, the one student made such an impression on us. The email was very well-written requesting that we just shorten the day because, you know, it's just busy work the last three minutes. And she did her own calculations. But that needed to be explained because, you know, education is state-regulated and we do have to make sure that we are providing, we are required to provide quality instructional time and we definitely don't need a minimum. We already only in school a hundred and eighty days in the United States of America. So we, we can't, we really can't afford to shorten anything else, eat down to a minimum. That's, that's not quality.
Okay, though, I know, I keep going, but we were told we couldn't. I kind of challenged it and said, explain to me why we can't. I'm not saying if we should or we couldn't, I just, I'm a legal person. I like somebody to tell me who the requirements are and what they are. So I got an email back that was different than kind of what you just said. Technically, we can do it. We can have seven classes and still meet the, and I don't mean minimum. We could even have an extra minute or two. We could still have that and meet the state requirements. Because I keep hearing people trying to tell us we cannot do it and that's not technically true. We can do it, whether or not we should do it, it is an option. We right now have about twenty extra minutes a day of instructional time. I shouldn't say extra.
No.
Beneficial, beneficial, but we have twenty minutes beyond what is required by the state. So even making the day five minutes shorter or ten is not putting us at the bare minimum. Just to state what I see is very clear, but it keeps getting muddled. That's my thought for now.
Well, and I don't want to.
I'll let you get back to your other.
And I certainly don't want to muddle anything. I'm just going to tell you from somebody, again, these are all people who work in schools. Minimum class periods are one thing. Transition periods, advisement, ILT, homerooms, all those things. When we start getting into testing, when we get into things that people think are important like pep rallies and things like that, homecoming week, all those things are come out of somewhere. So it's all those things that have to be figured into that and it's just pragmatic from a standpoint of you've got to move. And yes, you can build a schedule that takes up every single minute and you can get it down to, to the minimum. But then that gives you nothing for any kind of other movement. For example, some of our schools have taken ILT and have used that time a little bit differently because their lunch schedules, I think Northside is one where they've made some different adjustments. And Christine, you might.
Cafeteria size and you have.
Cafeteria size and limitations.
Multiple lunch periods.
Yeah. So it's just a matter of, again, this is where I rely on the experts in the buildings. I know how I was as a principal with my high school. There were some times I just had to have advisement period because these various issues about career planning, college and career planning, guidance efforts, things like that. So just try and make sure we don't get ourselves boxed in so tightly that there's no room for anything that doesn't end up taking away from instructional time, which we all know is important.
But Ms. McCray, yes, you're, you are correct. You can adjust the times to, to meet the minimum threshold. I just, I, I, the, the number of minutes in a class period for a, for a high school teacher is key. In fifty minutes, fifty, fifty-two minutes is about where you want to stop and not go below that. Yes, you can't go down to forty-five minutes. There, there are schools in the state doing that. But I, I, I mean, it's very difficult to get kids in, get them acclimated, do a, an initial opening work session and closing in, in that amount of time. But yes, you are correct.
And I think part of my concern, it goes to what Ms. Chambers said a little while ago. It's just that we're basing a lot of this of what experts and stuff say, but we didn't really give them more than one option. We've kind of said, hey, this is the option we've come up with. I, I get there was a subcommittee that researched it, but when we rolled it out to the bigger community, it was kind of this or the way we have it now and how do you feel? Whereas I felt like there kind of could have been a middle ground that might not get us exactly where we want to be with transportation, but it also might cut back some of the inconveniences and issues that we're going to have otherwise. Because why, I, I hear you on the one person for child, but I'm also hearing from another, you know, mom that's telling me her child's going to have to switch high schools because now she will not be able to get him to school and he's on a hardship and he's not going to get bust. So I don't, in any way, want it to sound like I'm not wanting what is best for every single child. But this change, while it may be best for every single child riding the bus, there are a lot of other children that it's going to have some issues for too. So we are not making, which I know we never will, but again, it, it is obviously a trade-off. And, yeah, my issue is not with starting later, it's why we have to start them as late as we are. Because it is for the working team, for the, you know, the kids in after-school programs. You know, there, there's a lot of detriment to getting out of school as late as they are and being able to start their next stop. You know, it's an hour of pay that they will not get because they can't get to work until five o'clock. I mean, there's a lot of different things that are going to negatively impact them. And sorry, I just, did you have another question? And back, and this is one side off though, but, you know, and I know we've been recruiting busters, bus drivers, but it's been pointed out to me that we do not pay as much as CCG does. Have we looked at that and how that might help us in competing with Columbus Consolidated Government for our drivers?
Yes, we have. They're two very different jobs though. And so when we compare, we compare to other school bus drivers as opposed to city bus drivers because those jobs are very different.
I guess, again, though, when you have people that are wanting to make the most they can, and honestly, to me, I think it'd be, I'd rather not drive a bunch of kids around, I'd rather drive a bunch of adults.
Well, I can, I can just share with you the feedback that I get. See, the MCSD bus drivers get a lot of benefits and not drive the hours that the CCG bus drivers drive. And so that's, that's the cities, that's the city struggle with bus drivers. They got to drive those long hours. Our bus drivers get to drop them off.
So you're saying they're paying more to entice them to do the extra hours?
Well, they're working more.
Well, but I mean, their hourly, their hourly rate is higher.
Yeah, because they're working all day, like, like an eight-hour job.
They have a full-time job.
Yeah, they have, that's a full-time job. When you work for a city government, when you're transporting citizens all over the city. It's not a pick-up, drop-off, pick-up, drop-off, part-time. And just, that's the problem that when I, when I talk to people who thought they wanted to drive the bus for the city government is those long hours. It's, it's all-day, eight-hour job.
And then my.
So they should get more.
Anyway, I probably beat the this and that to thing, but I just still, I know it's not this or that. I just, I like to address things, budget, whatever it is, I like to address them at one time, not do one piece and then another piece later, which is what I feel like with this rezoning. But that's all my comments for now.
I do want to, you didn't necessarily pose this as a.
Yes, I have one more question since we bought up, brought up pay for bus drivers.
Ms. Chambers, bef, before you answer.
Oh, okay, go ahead.
Uh, Ms. McCray, you didn't necessarily pose this as a question, but you said you had some concerns about the difference between the morning and how we gain resources in the afternoon and how we gain resources, how we need more time for the largest attendance zone. The reason that is because in the morning, we have less amount of time between the tiers. Because the school days are different lengths, elementary is the shortest, then middle school, then high school. You have more time in the afternoon between middle school and high school. So that's how you are able to gain those additional resources in the afternoon based upon the length of different tiers.
That still concerns me because we're now moving the middle schoolers to an early-year time, which the research shows they also should be starting later. And we've now bumped them a lot earlier too. So that concerns me also.
This is a question about the bus drivers because I do agree that in order for us to get or solve the problem of having not enough bus drivers, that we have to add some type of incentive. Did we not do some type of compensation plan that was supposed to, for our bus drivers? Did we not talk about that? This was like maybe three years ago when Ms. Tesson was here.
Pay raise, since then as well.
So by compensation plan, if you mean the pay raise.
It was a, it was a scale.
There was a significant pay raise across the board for bus drivers. It was much higher than the pay raise for other.
Right, I remember that, I remember us doing that. But are they still at the seventeen or, or some of them making more than seventeen dollars an hour?
Most of them are making more.
More than seventeen, okay, so that's a start pay.
That's their starting point, absolutely.
Yeah, because I remember looking at a scale that it wasn't just a flat, okay.
It's not a, so they get years of service and most of them are making, if they've been with us for a while, they're making much more than seventeen, twenty-five an hour.
Sort of like a step plan, like the teachers are on a step plan and they get on additional. Yes.
Okay, sounds good. I just wanted to make sure.
Ms. Buck. I'd like to share my feedback from, about the time changes. I have, I have email.
You know my request, right?
I have email, oh, I'm sorry. I have maybe a hundred emails from Columbus High students and teachers. Columbus High students and teachers who are disagreeing with the schedule. For the most part, these are the only, only people, that's the only email that I get that's disagreeing with the time change. Now, not to say that that's not, that's to discard that, but I would just like to say that because that's one population. That's what, that's what I'm talking about. Now, I get considerable email in agreement with the change from middle school parents and middle school students who would like to have, who would like to go to school earlier and get out earlier. Okay, so the data says the changes for middle school and high school, the latter, the late schedule benefits academically, behaviorally for middle schools and high schools. So, so this time, we're going to let the high, the middle, the middle school have the advantage of going earlier and getting out later as opposed to the high school. So one population, one population is going to be disadvantaged. It has to be the middle school. This time, there's a flip and this time, the high school will go later as opposed to going early as the middle school has been doing for the last three years.
More than that.
Three years or so.
More.
Well, or way more than that. So, so this time, my, my feedback is middle school and high school parents are very happy to have that switch. And also, I don't take it lightly that ten percent, I don't know where that number came from. I wouldn't care if it was ten percent or five percent or whatever. I don't take it lightly that these people are having to catch the bus, I don't care what that number is, I don't know where the ten percent came from, that they are having to catch the bus at, before six o'clock in the morning and getting home after five-thirty. To me, that's it for me. These people, if we can change our schedule for a way for these people to not have to get up so early in the morning and not have to get home so late at night, this is my consideration. Now, as I have said, as a student, I, 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 as, me personally, I do like the high school going earlier. Me personally, I don't know, because I guess I like sports. But when I think about these kids getting to school out at the bus stop at that time in the morning and getting home late at night, that's enough for me to agree with this schedule change.
I, I do want to, I've been waiting so that you can clarify the number because your presentation has been talking about sixty percent of all students utilize MCSD transportation. So, and I understood that to mean of all the students in Muskogee County School District, we transport sixty percent of them by the bus.
That is correct.
That's what I understood. Okay, so that's correct. All right, and I just wanted to make sure that, that that was your accurate number. Sixty percent of the children who attend Muskogee County ride the school bus?
Yes, that is correct.
Well, I think the number, or, so maybe the numbers, the ten percent come from these numbers in this column. The maybe two thousand, three, three thousand or so, is that the ten percent that you're adding up? Okay, then that's the ten percent. But, but even still, you're talking about nearly two, more than two thousand kids who are late to school or late getting home and riding the bus for that length of time is, that's a lot. Getting up before day, sound like my grandma, okay. So, yeah. That, that, that is, that is, that is hard, that is hard. Do we have any other questions? Because this is going to be for action. If, if I can just recap, all right, Ms. Chambers.
This is for Dr. Lewis. Did I hear you say that with this plan, you feel like you can increase your academic performance and some of the other issues that the board has asked you to work on?
Yes, ma'am. And I will say, we, we've talked a lot about research and someone like that, but I also wanted something that was important and that was an actual case study of a district similar to ours. And that's what Dr. Anderson has provided in his research. Because it's one thing to have research, it's another one to have a district in similar composition demographics and so on, similar to our own that we brought in. So we brought in case study there as well. So, but the answer is yes. We're, and again, I want to go back to what I said. As a superintendent, I wouldn't bring this as just something to stir up the hornet's nest. This is not something I'm looking to do. It's only because I, I feel like this is talking to all of our cabinet, talking to all the people in transportation, talking to our academic folks, looking at the research, again, case studies, trying to do those things to try and ensure that we're doing what you all have asked and directed us to do in terms of providing, always looking for how we can improve instruction. You heard about the math curriculums this evening. We're always striving to bring forward things that will improve. And our track record would, would show that we are making improvements. We've got a ways to go, but we've made great improvements in all of our metrics by which school systems are, are assessed by. And I'm proud of that and I hope you are as well as a board. Now, we're trying to look at where, where we can get efficiencies, if we can get improvement, give conditions, create the conditions for improvement as well as for enhancing efficiency in transportation. I, I'm thinking that's a, that's a win-win. So that is based on the input from our people in curriculum instruction, from our people in logistics and transportation. Those are the things we're trying to do based on the direction you all have given me. And, and my task as a superintendent and in turn, my task to our team to try and accomplish those things. So we're all working in the same direction. We may have a different idea how we do that and I'm trying to do that within the confines of also asking our practitioners, some of whom are teachers, but also principals who've got to figure out, at the end of the day, they got to make schedules work in the building level, as you well know. So all those factors are certainly taken into consideration, yes.
Ms. McCray.
Well, the one other thing I would ask, because I tend to forget things, is that we put a little marker for about three months into next year and get an. and get an update and see how our numbers really do fare um so far as if we are getting them there within seventy-five minutes. You know, if all this is paying out, but I also would like to know elementary school tr- um tardies, how, at what impact, if any, we see on those.
That's not fair.
I do forget that, but I am concerned that fifteen minutes early for elementary school is gonna lead to some loss of instruction time for some elementary school students. So anyway, just would like to put a tickle.
That, that would be interesting.
I would like to put a tickle to help remind us to kind of come back to all these things.
Because that's gonna be interesting.
I'm still voting not for it, but I have a feeling it's going through, so I just want to go ahead and put that.
That, that's going to be interesting because those parents of, like me, we still get there two minutes before the bell, I don't care what time, school starts. Uh, we'll be coming in there hot on two wheels and opening up the door and trying to get to work. I mean, when schools, when elem, when my kids first started elementary school, it was eight thirty, eight thirty-five. We were still eight thirty-five getting to school. Um, and then it changed to eight, we were still seven fifty-eight, you know, getting to school. And so I just, you know, I don't know, and you know, now high school, I'm, I'm gonna be getting there at, is it eight forty-five? If this passes, I, I'm gonna be there at eight forty-three, I mean, I'm just saying. I don't know how fair, I don't know how fair, because I'm gonna, I'm gonna tell myself I have more time or less time when I'm still gonna do this, you know, my same practice, but that will be interesting to bring that data. We do, we definitely will definitely need an update to see um the progress on if we are reaching those goals of being efficient in, in the students.
And I, I do want to remind everybody that until about Labor Day, it doesn't matter what schedule we're on, until about Labor Day, it doesn't start the plane out anyway. But I do want to point this out one more time, it seems simplistic.
Well, maybe by Christmas.
Well, no, no, we can do it in October, just not by Labor Day. But I do want to say this. And it seems obvious, but if there were a perfect schedule, every school system would be on it. There's a reason that not everyone's doing following the same schedule, but there's also a reason, an apparent reason, that nine states are considering legislation for a later start time. I don't know, no, not, they are not. I know Florida is. Uh, and several other states in the, that are looking at that. But that said, we want to bring something forward, we want it to be right too, and if we have to make adjustments and tweaks going forward, whatever that might be, we will certainly do that. We don't say that we, what we're proposing is gonna be perfect, but we know it's gonna be better than what we've got right now.
Okay, so we've been talking about this since late March, and it will be on our action agenda next week, Monday, for us to take action either up or down for this proposed change, all right? Okay, where are we? Oh, five point zero two. Revised Board Policy J B Student Attendance for Military, Dr. Lewis.
Yes, this is simply a policy that we're working with our military families regarding just, and it's, it's basically codifying what we do in current practice with allowing students who ha, whose parents are military connected and have a change of permanent station. This is just codifying that for them to, so they're not uh, uh at a disadvantage or penalized.
And we will be voting next on, at our June meeting.
June, on this one.
All right, five point zero three is the edit to Board Policy I D E Code Curricular Activities.
Right, this is the same policy we reviewed last month. The only thing was that we discovered in that policy that it talks something about where the board was required to adopt athletic schedules, and that's not been a practice the board for many times, that's administrative function. So, rather than just taking out at the board table last month and cutting the board out, I feel like it need to be fully vetted, make sure everybody understood that fully. And that's why we're bringing that for correction and making that revision. Just wanted that to be clear for everybody.
All right, that was one that Ms. McCray um was pointing out.
Yep.
All right. At five point zero four, Student Code of Conduct for the school year twenty-four.
And that will be voted on this month, I believe, that's been on the table for thirty years.
That's for Monday?
Yes.
Got a question?
Yeah, oh yeah, a question, make sure we have our, dang, where did I write it down? Um, eh, page twelve, it talks about the magnet student.
Page twelve.
Page, and we need to up that, date that in line with what we.
Whoever's taking notes, page twelve.
Just now did with the Rainy McCullar School, because it says that, you know, you aren't, you can't qualify to play, anyway. We need to change that.
Right, to reflect that, yeah.
Is this, this is coming back in June?
No, this is coming up for May, so we'll make that edit.
Next week, all right, so we'll look, make sure we have the edit.
It's printed, yeah.
Updated. All right. Five point zero five is the twenty twenty-three Georgia School Board Association Delegates. In keeping with our delegates are Ms. Buckner as the delegate and Ms. Chambers as the alternate, and it will be an action item. Next. I, I don't know, Ms. Buckner.
And I'm close to. Listen, um, we, the um, the things that we vote on as delegates, could we go over those or do the um board members get a, all of them get a copy to go over? Because I was reading where uh they need to make sure, see, I'm, I'm voting usually the way of G S B A. And so if the board members wanted any input on all the stuff, of course now, we would have done that in the meeting that we did and make it anyway. But uh sometimes we can have, when we get, when we, when we're in it, when we are there, we can make comments from our board. So I was just wondering if, if we can just send them a copy of all this.
And it does go out to um every board member in the state.
Okay.
That does go out on the email, but you know, as district director, if you want to highlight something, you know, that's, that's always been the director's prerogative to highlight what we need, maybe of interest.
I just want like our board, you know, in case they wanted something, me, you know, because usually I vote the way the G S B A votes. And I was just saying, if they wanted any kind of comment, if one of the board members wanted to read and see if they wanted something, you know, that's all, that's all.
Well, they actually ask the delegates, not necessarily the district director.
They ask the delegates. If you are a delegate, they will ask you, can you go back to your board, if they have anything to add, things of that nature. Uh, district directors get a copy, just like every other board member. But um, the only time I think we've ever reviewed it and um had edits was probably twenty fourteen.
I was just saying, we could.
And you were the delegate.
Yeah.
And you, you and I sat down and we went through it together. But um, I don't think we've done it since then.
Yeah, but I was thinking maybe like a lot of things, a lot of issues of, like some of the boards would have discussed with their board and they bring up an issue, I was just saying, for, and for the most part, I go along with G S B A. And I was just saying, if all the board members said it, if they could look over it, if they wanted to and sus- suggest something to kill me, that's, that's all.
Sure, gotcha, sure.
No way questioning Mrs. Buckner. It just made me, right, Ms. Bloodworth, I feel like we used to do some kind of blanket approval for our board member travel, and I don't remember doing that in a while. Do you know what I'm talking about?
The, the budget item for, the budget, go ahead, Ms. Ms. Jones, with your mic.
Okay, I just feel like it's been a while. So we did it last year?
It's every June, isn't it? When we do the budget, it has the um, the, the, it's a budgetary item for board travel.
That's why I was wondering if maybe, I just remember it used to be kind of a same separate item, and I don't remember seeing it in a while, but we're covered.
It's still the same item, same, it's still its own separate item. Um, and uh speaking of uh Georgia School Board Association, Ms. Buckner um is, is now our new district director, I mean, district three director. That election was held May first, right. Yeah, that's what I was.
But she was no longer. Eligible.
As eight years, so now someone else has to take that position. I'm glad that it's another Muskogee County school district person, so. Great job, congratulations.
We try to hold on to that, to that spot. Five point zero six is a resolution for Georgia Vision for Public Education. Are there any questions about that?
It's G S B A.
Just the G S B A. I was looking down, I tried to look left and right and pan. Sometimes I might catch you, we may make eye contact, but I'm looking, just trying to make sure. All right, then we'll, that's it for uh Policy Committee, then Personnel Committee. Six point zero one, uh the superintendent, um go, I can talk while you walk. Is, is asking us to approve um the E S S Southeast LLC to provide substitute placement for the school year twenty-four, and we will hear from our H R Director.
Just as a reminder.
Oh, wait.
As she's getting turned on there, um as a reminder, we discussed this during our retreat back in, what, late February, I believe it was. So this is a follow-up to that, so Ms. Carter.
Good evening again to the board members, the board chair, superintendent.
Pull your mic down to you.
Here we go. I'm Ms. Buckner. Uh, as I said, good evening uh to the board chair, board members and superintendent. When you trusted me to fill this role, one of the primary priorities that I had was staffing, recruiting, retention, and that also includes substitute replacements. And um when I look at the previous and current efforts, they're just not meeting our need. So, uh we started to explore kind of a different approach. Uh, so to give you an idea of why this is so important, you see the driving factors here. Although we have filled many of the positions uh over time, we've had, we've had a lot of activity uh since uh, since I've started, we still have, have you seen from the, from the personnel report, we still have four hundred and twenty-two openings. Of those openings, a hundred and four are teachers in Paris. And when you add in daily absences, uh that they take over two hundred and fifty, over two hundred and fifty vacancies or absences every day. And that requires substitute placement. Temporary placements have helped with roles like uh S M, the stu- uh school nutrition custodians to be a bit more successful with that, but it has not been as successful with teachers in Paris. So, um what we wanted to do was take a look at a, a different approach, especially because when we add on the fact that uh last report showed we had five hundred and ninety-five substitutes on top of that. So, uh we, since we've only been able to fulfill about forty-five to fifty percent, we are, are knowing that that's not nearly enough. So that is what has impacted uh what you see here about some of the safety concerns that have propped up. And as we talked about in the board retreat, uh the number two workers comp claims for us are student interventions. What that means is, is that what some of the contributing factors are to that number being uh so high uh is that we have sped classes that are understaffed, I just told you about the vacancies. We have um that there are, it's called professional crisis management training that occurs that teaches you how to handle students in that class so that you can do it properly. When you're understaffed and you have uh and absences, you find yourself in a position where maybe people who are covering the room may not have those, those certifications. So we find ourselves in a very precarious situation. Uh, so what we are proposing is something totally different, not attempt service, but um looking at potentially moving all the substitute teachers that we currently have and any others that we need to bring on board to have it managed by uh a uh a staffing company. E S S um would have all the employees, and I want to, I want to take the time to thank the cabinet for helping do a deep dive exploration. They asked some amazing questions that allow us to look at this from every single angle to determine what's the best option for us. And when it came down to it, um it looked like E S S was the best. And, and what we want to do is to make sure that we do provide a better service for our substitutes, fill our classrooms, and allow for us to uh make sure that our students are receiving the best support that they can possibly have for academic achievement. So what you see here is um in offering E S S as an educational staffing solution, they actually provide not only substitute placement, but they can even do permanent staffing. But we're looking at phase one. Phase one would be about uh addressing the immediate need of substitutes and um making sure that we understand that, as I mentioned before, previously temp service did not work successfully. So the different approach is actually using someone who manages and focuses solely on filling substitutes and um and place, not just substitute placements, but even they can put in services where they manage a particular position long-term. What's great about it is that they happen to have been successful across all of the United States. They've got thirty-five uh different states that they're in and servicing over nine hundred school districts to include over fifty right here in Georgia successfully. What's, the other piece that's so important is, is I, I know I remember here, I think it was Kathy Williams would make comments about we need to pay our substitutes weekly. Well, guess what? This gives an opportunity to pay them weekly. They would get, uh when you look to the, the table on the right, those are some of the benefits that we would get in this partnership by providing things like benefits, incentives, insurance, workers comp, weekly pay. There's so much more that can be offered to them if we had someone who was absolutely dedicated to taking care of those things for them. The people that would be hired for these roles are local. The, not only the, the personnel that we would be hiring from the pool of candidates, but the people that would be supporting us, dedicated to us. Three full-time uh employees will be working directly with Muskogee County School District, would be assigned one per region, they would not only be meeting with H R, but they would literally be going out and working intake, understanding what the needs are. Because sometimes even though you have a job description, you may have different needs for each school. So, it's a customized approach of not only getting out to the schools, but involving the administration and making these decisions for the school, so that we're making sure that they're trained the way they need them to be trained, that they are where they need to be. I mean, these could be, they could be long-term subs, they could be floaters, you just never know what your need is until you actually connect with each of the, uh with the administrations of each school. And then the fill rate is the, one of the biggest issues as well. Clearly, we've been doing about forty-five to fifty percent, and that is not nearly enough. So what we're trying to get to is at least seventy percent. Well, I can tell you that the results are showing that they can get over eighty percent. So that's something that we definitely want to consider as a possible way of res- uh resolving our situation. All right, so since E S S is not new to us, as I had mentioned before, they've, they've already, um we've talked about them at the board uh retreat. They've also presented previously um to offer services like this. They are the parent company of proximity learning, where the services that proximity learning are providing are very similar, and we're seeing success with that as well. They're also a member of four national uh purchasing cooperatives uh that we could potentially be a part of. We're already members of TIPS. But what that, that means is, and it's very easy to join any one of these, Aqualis, um uh One G P A, P C A. It's easy to join them, but by doing so, it's free to access the contract. So we can actually look at contract options that are offered to be able to determine what would work, work best for us. It's a very customized approach, uh and we have the opportunity to uh take advantage of that free service. What's different about E S S compared to what we've been doing? This offers you a very clear snapshot of what that is. They would only be focusing on us, they're education focused. There, there would be no other distractors, there, there would be no other services that they're providing for someone else. We would have a dedicated focused service. They are, are very strong at what they do, they've been doing it for years, they are committed, and they include the community in their actions, especially when they talk about connecting with the community to determine where we can get the pools of candidates. They provide the training, they provide the resources. All of those things are extremely helpful because it would allow us to focus on the things that we need to focus on. I, I mentioned the customized solution, they will tailor what they do to what we need. And that's extremely important as well, because we know that the culture here at Muskogee County School District is very important to us, and we want to maintain the same type of service, no matter who provides that substitute placement. And then, of course, the, I lost it. As I said before about proximity learning, we have the virtual teacher through proximity learning who's also supplied by E S S. So when you look at the benefits, more substitute placements improve teacher morale, because teachers are not covering classrooms during breaks and planning periods or combining classrooms. And most importantly, those, more placements help enhance student achievement. So it's a win-win solution. It will also help, M C S D, the recruiting team, will be able to focus more on those full-time, hard-to-fill positions. And the more substitute placements that we put in allow, and this is what I was talking about, why substitute placements improve teacher morale, is because they're not going to be doing other stuff, they're going to be doing what they're supposed to. The recruitment pipeline is also going to be, it's going to be another option, because the partnership that we have will allow us to focus on not only filling the placements, but giving them the opportunity to get certifications so that we can hire them permanently. That is the ultimate goal. We would love to have them come in permanently, and E S S is willing to do that so that we can, again, have this partnership while we're filling the, the substitute placements now. We will also, let's make sure, sorry, my, my, I have the wrong glasses on today. Benefits and incentives are being offered by E S S because, because this is their sole focus, they have the ability to provide things that we can't provide for our substitutes. Incentives that encourage them to bring candidates as consideration for a pool. There's, there's the community, different types of activities, different types of funding that we just can't offer. We do some things, we, they just do it better, because that's what they're, they're dedicated to do. And again, that means it's a win-win for us. And the other win-win is that if they don't fill the position, we don't pay. And that's extremely important to remember, because of course, we want to watch every dime. When we look at the recruiting, here are some of the things that they do that have resulted in successful fill rates. We, again, we do some of those same things at M C S D, but not to the same scale. So, there's no competing interest, because they're totally focused on us, they're focused on our schools only. They have frequent check-in meetings to see what the quality of the teaching is, and that the services are, that are being rendered are to the quality that we want. They'll offer referral programs, we have one too, but they're going to be giving them individually on a, on a regular basis, a hundred dollars each time. They have Kickstarter programs, it's a hundred and twenty-five. Engagement, appreciation, subs for subs, different incentives that, that are offered are for hard-to-fill assignment locations, targeted recruiting, both traditional and digital, district activities like football games and PTO meetings, booster club, all those kinds of things. And then, of course, there's community gauge, engagement with the military, churches, nonprofits, et cetera, Chamber of Commerce and community events. And the military one, I really enjoyed, not only because of my, my background, but they're one of the recruiters just retired or left the military, discharged from the military, she already has a network, she already has connections, and would be a wonderful asset to be able to tap into those things already. When we look at the cost, and this is where we tend to see a bit of a break, but I want to try to share more clearly what this means to us. Since the Board Retreat, we, we've been able to do a deeper dive into the financial impact on the district. And E S S does have a markup of thirty-one point seven-five percent, but that's actually less than the services that we were receiving before, at least with the contract that they have for now. But these are the pay rates, and then this is the bill rate with the markup. But now, good news, bad news story, right? The good news is if we fill more positions, that we can do that. The bad news is that we can fill more positions, because we can potentially do that with E S S. To compare apples to apples, though, I've focused more on making sure, oops, lost one. Focus more, here's that estimated impact comparison. So, we're looking at, to compare apples to apples, just the substitute salary plus FICA. That's, that's to make sure that we're talking about the same things. But currently, we're budgeted for fifty percent, and the fill rate is, we already recognize that it's not nearly enough. When we look at where we want to be, seventy percent fill rate, and if we try to do it ourselves, which we have not shown that we can do, it would cost the district three point seven million, if we, if we try to do it ourselves. Now, if we engage E S S or someone who can meet the fill rate for us, it would cost considerably more. That's the, the good news, bad news of it. They'd fill them, but it will cost us more. It could, E S S success rate, though, is typically over eighty percent in a lot of the different locations that they serve. So we know that there is a, there's proof that they can do this for us, and that's something that we just have not been able to do. And the markup that is in here does not just show, you know, it's not pocketed, it's not completely pocketed. What it does is, it's reinvested back into doing all those things that I listed that they do, getting with the community, working with the military, providing bonuses and, and incentives to the employees to help build the pipeline that we're looking at, the pool of candidates, and ultimately, a pipeline. And so, as we look at the, in the future, a potential offset, I, I'd want to emphasize where we are right now. First, doing Phase One, there are some initial savings we would, we would be able to see. Frontline is something that we currently pay for, but E S S already has it, so we wouldn't have to pay for that. We wouldn't have to pay for the workers, the workers' comp premiums, because we would identify that that has, workers' comp has gone over to E S S instead. The focus, again, is going to be to getting to that seventy percent fill rate for the number of substitutes that I had already talked about. And then, the, the expectations are high. We, we know that we can get more, we can get better results using E S S than we can internally, and it would allow us to not only increase teacher morale, better achievement, help to, for students to achieve goals, but also to be able to help HR focus on the, the other positions that need a great deal of attention to for hardship, filling of roles. But if we can get to Phase Two, Phase Two is not right now, we've got to stop the bleeding, but if, Phase Two, if we can get thirty-five paras filled by E S S on a permanent basis, it will actually pay for this. This offsets the balance of the, balance of that cost. And so, and that's why I put this up, because I wanted you to see what the potential could be. Once we address the substitute issue, maybe we can also take a look at the para issue or the equivalent. It's not just paras, it could be other positions as well. They have the ability to cover many of those. And we currently have forty-five vacancies for paras. So, the ability to find the offset of this balance is definitely there. So, what we're looking for is, we're seeking for you to vote to help with understaffing by improving the fill rate, providing better support for our substitutes, reducing workers' comp claims related to physical student interventions, and improving teacher morale by offering a sustainable way to provide quality substitutes when needed, providing another pipeline for recruiting teachers. And we believe that this approach is by being a partner with E S S. This is the best option that we have to read, towards that end. So, thank you for your time.
Question?
Yes.
Does this organization contract with any other organization in Columbus?
In Columbus? Not as a school, well, they, they are the parent company of Proximity Learning, and they supply support from Muskogee County School District, but I'm not aware of, you, there's not a district inside. Let me introduce, so if we have specific questions for E S S, I happen to have Daniel McLaughlin here, he's the Vice President of Business Development, and also Casey Graeber, who is a Regional Manager of E S S as well.
Okay. Well, welcome, the question, it's, it's actually a couple of questions. Do you just work with school, educational institutions? And are you working for any other educational institution in our area?
Yeah, no, we're solely dedicated to education, so we only work with public school systems. So, obviously, we don't have a partnership with Muskogee, Muskogee County, so we don't work with any schools here in Columbus. But once we do enter into a partnership with a school district, we put a local team in place to operate. So we were talking about a three-person team that would be hired from the community to manage your school district. So, there's no competing interest, as we're not sending anybody else to any other industry within the community.
Okay, that, that's, that, that's the answer to my, that's the answer I was trying to get to. And secondly, this is for Ms. Carter, thank you. Oh, well. So typically, in the budget, we have budgeted with other temp agencies. So are you recommending that we replace that with this one entity? Since I see culinary tech, custodian, parapros, and teachers, would this company would be able to provide those, fill those temporary vacancies or permanent?
Yes, ma'am. So, this is more of a professional service, it's not a temp agency, and the, but we do have-
My question is, are we replacing the cost of the temp agency?
And, and the answer is no, because the temp agencies still, that we currently have in, it's, the reserves network used to be Staffing Connections. They actually supply and have been supportive of custodians, they've been more helpful with custodians and with school nutrition personnel. So we're not taking that away, we're just addressing the substitutes. They have the ability to do more, but that transition is something we would have to consider in the future.
So this proposal would only be for teachers and?
And paras.
Substitute teachers.
Substitute teachers, yes.
Not any other area?
Not at this time.
Not any other employee?
Not at this time.
All right. And, okay, that, that's my question for now.
Are there any other questions?
Ms. Chambers?
I just have a, a couple of logistical questions. So, if we were to approve E S S, then the substitute teachers then are employees of E S S?
Yes, ma'am.
And so, what happens if there is a problem with a substitute and a principal no longer wants a substitute to return, because there was some type of, you know, before, we have a process, a discipline process, what will happen if, if they're under someone else's umbrella of employee?
Basically, the same thing. There's still a process to address performance. It's in close partnership and constant feedback, as well as a reporting process that the principals have directly back to E S S. They, if we are not pleased with the services or the individual that's performing those services, it will be taken care of.
Okay. My other question is, again, a logistical question. A lot of times, when teachers are out, they have a specific sub that they, especially if they're long-term subs, they have a specific sub that knows their kids, that they always call when they're out, will they still have that option?
Yes, ma'am. No, no doubt. There, there's, as I said, there's the opportunity for long-term subs, and the ones transitioning over would remain in those roles, because that's what the student, they're familiar with that. But what we would also be looking at is if there are opportunities for roles that, for instance, we know will be vacant, or a number of vacancies happen in, in the same school, lots of them, but you don't know where they're going to be, you just know that there's going to be a lot. So you may have someone that's roving or focused particularly on a school. But that's what the dedicated recruiter will be doing, is they'll be working with the schools in the region to determine what the needs are, and modifying the approach that best suits the needs of the school.
Okay, and last question, would they be given our sub, current sub list, and start from there?
Yes, as a matter of fact, with the frontline, the way it's set up, because they're on it already, they can transfer it over. And so we would pick up from where we left off with ours.
So we're not losing anyone, but we have the potential of gaining about twenty percent more, twenty to thirty percent more substitutes?
Yes, ma'am.
In order to fill, okay.
Sounds good.
Ms. McCray?
Are there any other questions?
Okay, on that note, I don't know why, but I have a feeling that some retired teachers that are acting as substitutes might be hesitant to go to work for a new company, because they have been working for the school district, they have relationships with the administration at their schools, some of them may only do it part-time. You know, how has that factored over? Before, are there part-time options, seasonal options? I'd like to understand a little more about, kind of, because-
Wait, don't we use, they're already switched over to frontline, right?
Their frontline is the software app, the software that kept absence.
Do we manage it?
Manage the-
I, I thought they were already over to another company.
No, no.
Okay, we still do it?
So I'm just saying, you know, people that have been substitutes for us are now going to be the employees of another company. And that might not sit as well with some as they do. So, one, I'm trying to wage what their difference will be, not just in having to answer to somebody new, if they will still have some flexibility with, if they're wanting to do it part-time, if they're wanting to do it seasonally. And then, what at the end of the day is the sub now going to make? Because we're paying a thirty-one percent markup, but I know that doesn't all go in any way to them, because y'all have overhead and various benefits. So I'd like to know what their rate of pay will be under this new situation.
Yes, before I switch it over to them, the, the rate of pay is the same, but we would have the markup. But the one thing that is different is if they want to work longer hours, they can. They can work five days a week, eight hours a day. But if they, if they don't want to work that, there are options, and that's where I want to step aside and let you speak to that.
So, so we can be clear on that cost slide? On the cost slide, the pay rate versus the bill rate? So that means the sub would be making, based on these criteria over here, four-year degree, for example, long-term, one-ten, that's what they would be making. What do we pay now? We pay one-twenty-five? Well, a long-term sir, sub with a valid certificate makes one-fifty, would make one-fifty. What, how is this in comparison to what we pay right now, probably is the better question? It's the same, that's what I thought I was reading that, right? But they would be billing us one-ninety-seven, sixty-three.
Okay, sorry, because when I read that, I thought pay rate was what we currently pay them, I didn't know that's what their pay rate would be under the new situation, so it is the same.
So that question's answered.
Yeah, absolutely. So with the pay rate, the district sets the pay rate, so whatever your pay rates are today would remain intact, and that bill rate covers the operation of the program. So that covers payroll taxes, workers' comp, general liability, incentives, recruiting costs, a local team, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, everything that we talked about today. As far, I mean, the success rate with the existing sub-staff as joining E S S has been tremendous. In fact, I'm going to share an email that I received this morning from an HR Director that just started services with us in March?
Two months ago.
Two months ago, okay. And it says, "Dear Human Resource Director, wanted to share-" And it says, "Dear Human Resource Director, wanted to share with you how happy I am being employed by ESS as a substitute teacher. I've been a substitute in this county since 2003. I was very concerned when I learned that ESS would be taking over my employment. However, there is no need for concern. It has been a smooth transition, and there are many things that are an improvement." And then, they just go into the different things, weekly pay, the opportunity to see their payroll via an app, and some of the benefits and incentives that they've been able to see since being employed by ESS. They've been nominated as Substitute of the Month and received a $25 gift card. So, there were some of the different benefits and incentives. So, we're not here to take anything away from the existing substitutes. They're getting paid what you, would you dictate them to be paid, what they're currently being paid? But now, they have an opportunity to get the weekly pay, an opportunity to participate in our benefits programs, including Health Vision Dental 401K. They have different incentives that we have for hard-to-fill days. Mondays and Fridays are always hard to fill. So, we have a lot of localized incentives if you have a hard-to-fill location. We really dig into the absence management system to identify those schools that are hurting the most, and we know, but you probably have some schools that have no trouble getting substitutes, whereas others really struggle. Well, why are they struggling? We want to understand why, and then create different recruiting plans around those particular locations, and different incentive programs around those particular locations to drive, help drive utilization in to those particular locations. In addition to that, we do a lot of support with the substitute employees as well. So, they get a survey after their first day of employment, their 10th day and their 30th day. We want to know what went well, and what didn't go well, what are some areas of improvement? And maybe they weren't in the right school setting, maybe they were in a high school and they'd be better off with the elementary kids, but we want to know why. Because I'm sure there's often times when human resources recruits somebody, onboards somebody, trains somebody, that substitute may work one day, and then they never see or hear from them again. Well, why? So, we're going to keep that engagement and support with those particular employees to make sure that they are supported, and that they're in position to be successful and stay. And maybe they're working one assignment a week, well, let's get them to two or three assignments per week. So, there was a couple of questions about if they only want to work a certain amount of days. Well, they can really pick and choose their spots on how much they want to work. They can certainly set up priority lists, the teachers and the principals, where if I only want to work in this particular, or if I'm a teacher, I want this person to sub in my classroom, they can set up those priority lists, and substitutes can set up priority lists as well, if they only want to work in particular locations. So, I mean, this really is a, is a program where we're going to work together for the betterment of the teachers, the schools, the students, and the substitutes as well.
I now know what I'm remembering. We did have a presentation before about turning it over. For whatever reason, we did not, we didn't, yeah, okay, I know.
Well, I do think in messaging, that would be very important, that people that are doing part, because, and I've stated as a part-time person myself, I'd be very scared if I thought somebody was coming along, taking my job, and I actually left one company because they wanted me to work full-time. So, just say, I think that's going to be very important in messaging, that it's seamless. Sorry. Going back to kind of the question about other areas, if we ventured out further than substitutes, that would have to come back before us, correct? And then, man, I'm just kind of curious, if we are struggling, I know that there's some benefits to it, but I also know some of our substitutes are kind of at a stage in life when, you know, they're already getting benefits because they're retired teachers, or, sorry, Medicare, or whatever it is. So, I mean, again, y'all are bringing local people. This isn't where we're, you know, like traveling nurses, where we're bringing people from other areas here for just a certain amount of time.
100%. I always say, you know, we don't have a school bus coming in from Atlanta with a bunch of substitutes. The people are here in the community.
I have nothing against Atlanta, but you read my mind.
Nor do I, nor do I. But the people are here in the community, and it's really up to us to go out and find them. And that's usually one of the number-one questions we get as well. How can you be more successful than we can as a district? And I think the first thing is, this is our sole focus, this is all we do. We only partner with school districts, and we only help them find substitute staff, right? So, we have a lot of recruiting engines from a corporate perspective that we have running in the background, a lot of digital, social media, things like that. But what's really most impactful is the boots on the ground. And so, we would hire a three-person team to manage your district, and they would be dedicated to your district. And a lot of it is school-based recruiting. It's showing up at PTO meetings, car lines at elementary schools, parents line up two hours before school ends, go into football games, things like that.
Asking them why they have time on their hands to sit there early.
Well, you can go outside and get paid, right? So, it's just making the community aware of the opportunities that are in the school. Sometimes, they don't even know that, all I need is a high school diploma to be able to substitute in this classroom, or what those credentials are. So, we want to make them aware of those opportunities. So, that's really the number-one thing, is just the boots on the ground, being involved with the community, and making the community aware of those positions. The benefits and incentives surely help, because we're making you more competitive with the local businesses in town. You know, the public's down the road is offering weekly pay, benefits, well, now, now you are too. So, we're making you more competitive to compete with those local businesses.
And then, I just, because I always like to know who else is doing it, if we could get a list of the counties, because again, you kind of said that Atlanta thing, I get a little nervous when it's like something only Atlanta's doing, and now we're trying to do it. I kind of like to have an idea of the other school districts that are using it.
I did.
My daughter recently moved to Valdosta, and in between, while her son's getting acclimated, she's been serving, and ESS has been serving, so I just did a little secret shopper and just asked, and she said, "It's been great, she loves it." In fact, she got hired with the school district as a result of doing that substituting, so, yeah. Yeah, yeah.
And I just wanted to mention on, I'm sorry, Ms. Chambers, I was just going to say, in the background data that's included, there's a slide that actually lists over the, all the Georgia school districts.
One thing I do want to say also, one thing she mentioned was the tremendous training that was provided, the orientation, the onboarding, and the training that was provided. She said, wherever she has been before to do some of the substituting or whatever, never received the kind of attention and focus that she received from ESS, so.
And they tend to use former teachers, people who have done, that have been working in, maybe even not only in the industry, but maybe locally. But either way, the school district has a say in the kind of training they need, and maybe even who supplies that training.
So, that leads me to my next question, because I know that it's expensive to train and to administer certifications. So, if we have a sub that goes through the process, and they receive the certification, and we want to hire that person, is there a fee for that?
So, generally, there is a fee for that, if it's before 60, 60 days, but once it's beyond 60 days, then there's no fee for that.
So, if you've trained them, they receive the certification, and they have to stay with you at least 60 days before we're able to hire them without paying a penalty?
Yeah, that allows us to recoup the marketing, onboarding, recruiting costs, and training costs, and things like that.
Sure, I just think that was important, that's important to know, but definitely, I understand why there would be a fee.
Right, but, but that is waived after 60.
Yes, okay, thank you.
Just to put a, just to put a measurement on that, the common contract for temp services to do something like that, they have to be with you for 90 days. So, not only has he shortened the time, but we know what we're getting, so. Are there any other questions?
Oh, I have a, I don't have a question, but I do have a comment. It certainly sounds like something that we do need in Muskogee County. And on a personal note, if y'all come close enough, y'all can hire me.
Yes, ma'am. You heard that, right? And another cat. Are there any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you very much. 6.02, we're still in the Personnel Committee. Superintendent will be recommending Carlos Jackson to serve as Principal at River Road Elementary School. There are attachments on each of these. So, the resume is attached on River Road Elementary School, 6.03. Superintendent is asking to approve Dr. Katie Leteri as the Principal at Wesley Heights Elementary School. There's an attachment, 6.04. Superintendent is recommending the appointment at Erin Cohn for the Assistant Principal, Ms. Rebecca Barton. 6.05, Assistant Principal Recommendation for Allen Elementary School is Mr. Charles Freeman. 6.06, Assistant Principal Recommendation at Britt David Magnet Academy is Melissa Thomas. 6.07, the Assistant Principal Recommendation at Hardaway High School is Matthew Redman. 6.08, the Assistant Principal Recommendation for Jordan Vocational High School Career Academy. College and Career Academy is Mr. Kenneth Josie Jr. 6.09, the Assistant Principal Recommendation for Kendrick High School is Ms. Ebony Cuts. And 6.10, Assistant Principal Recommendation for Midland Academy is Angel Brooks. 6.11, Assistant Principal Recommendation for Rothschild Leadership Academy is Mr. David Hughes. 6.12, Assistant Principal Recommendation for Spencer High School is Ms. Dorsey. And the final item on Personnel is the monthly Personnel Reports. Those are all attached. Hopefully, you'll, if you haven't already had a chance to look through all of those resumes and the Personnel Report, please do so. All of these will be voted on on Monday. Ms. Slade, do you have a question?
I don't. No, I'm just getting ready for-
Hit your mic, Ms. McCray.
We're going to have a very full house next.
Yes, we will have a full house.
Okay, come in, okay.
All right, and then, next, that's why you had your mic on. All right. Somebody turned it off, I just wanted to make sure. Next up is Discipline Committee.
Thanks, Madam Chair. There are actually no items submitted for the Discipline Committee.
Thank you so very much. Then, we have the Property Committee Report, please.
As I'm looking, okay, yes, the Property Committee. First, we have the Library Report, which says that the Summer Reading Challenge is often an early start, that's very exciting to hear, and that children need only to read 10 books, and teens and adults for four hours to get completion and win a prize, so please go online and register and track your reading. Tons of programs this summer, and great reading for all. Plus, don't miss Two Golden Ticket Tuesdays in late May and July. Altogether Now is sponsored by Aflac and the Muskogee County Library Foundation. There are quite a few great service stories, we commend everybody, but I know we're running late, so I'm going to move on now to the next item, which is the Library Report, I mean, the Museum Report. It opened, opened the next museum on tour exhibition at the Do Good Fun Gallery in April, breaking news Ledger Enquirer photographs. The Columbus Museum owns more than 250 photographs from the archives of the Ledger Enquirer, spanning from the 1940s to the 1990s. These images represent a fraction of the Ledger Enquirer's output, but illuminate dozens of notable events and the people in our community. The presence of the military, Black Americans' struggle for civil rights, and the advent of new technology are among the moments captured. So, we urge everyone to go see that, the Do Good Fund, it's not on Tenth Street across from, yes, I've been, yes, I've been there before, it's a really interesting space and a great thing. That's a whole side venture, but I'll tell you later. During the month of April, we reached 931 people through programs. We hosted visiting artist Daniel McCoy from Santa Fe, New Mexico, in preparation for a mural project after reopening. Sorry, I'm trying to read quickly, but anyway. All good things happen on the museum, despite a huge renovation, they are still doing a lot and accomplishing a lot, and we are thankful for that. That concludes-
Thank you so very much, Ms. McCray. And then, our Construction Committee, Mr. Cantrell.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Moving to 9.01, the Middle School Athletic Field Upgrade. As part of the 2020 East Boston School District will upgrade the middle school athletic fields. The project has been broken into phases because of the size of the project. As part of the project, the middle school athletic fields will get new scoreboards, goalposts, soccer goals, bleachers, irrigation, and site upgrades that may be needed. Construction Department requests approval to use Sanher Patel's Architectural Firm to design Phase Four of the project. The Athletics and Construction Departments designed upgrades for Phase Four at a cost not to exceed 6% of the final construction cost. The Phase Four will include the following schools, Fort Middle School and Midland Middle School. Any questions on that, ladies? Okay, move down to the next one. 9.02, Contract High School Athletic Lighting. The District Athletic and Construction Departments request approval to use Musco Sports Lighting Source to install lights on the athletic practice fields at the four high schools that do not currently have lights, Carver, Hardaway, Northside, and Shaw. The budgetary impact would be $1,225,000. Any questions, ladies? If not, we'll move to the next one. 9.03, the Arnold Modernization Site Application. In accordance with the Georgia DOE requirements, board approval is needed for such facility, which has additions of modernization. The Construction Department requests approval of the site for the Arnold Modernization Project. I don't see a cost on it. I don't know, there was supposed to be a price, but I don't see a price for that project.
For this particular agenda item, it's just the attached paperwork that we have to submit, it's not a cost associated with it.
I'm sorry, I didn't see where your voice is coming from.
For this particular agenda item, it's just the attached paperwork that we have to submit for the project.
Got you, thank you, Travis.
You're welcome.
9.04, Athletic Field Upgrades, Phase Four. The School District Construction Department requests Phase Four Athletic Field Upgrades project be delivered with Construction Manager at Risk Model. Anything else you want to add on that, Travis? I don't see. Okay. Resolution 905, Resolution 23 through 27, Local Facility Plan, faculty plan. The Construction Department is requesting the board approves to update local facility plan through June 2027. The Construction Department invalidation by a survey team, which includes district-level administrators for area school districts. Any questions on that one? Travis is going to come up and give a- Construction Status Report? Thank you, sir.
Good evening, Travis Anderson, Chief Operations Officer. I will be very brief, we're going to bring this slideshow up. It is posted online after our meeting on next Monday, it'll be posted online, so we're going to just skip to some of the highlights. Of course, we are working on our new elementary school, we're going to pass by the video. But as you can see, lots of work is happening, lots of progress being made on the new elementary school, we're really excited about that. Still on schedule to open for summer 2024. What we really want to talk about is our big event at Jordan High School to see the upgrades to the new Jordan Vocational High School for College and Career Academy. We invite our entire community to join us tomorrow for the open house. Guided tours will be at 4:00, 4:30, and 5:00 p.m. However, you can do a self-guided tour anytime between 4:00- However, you can do a self-guided tour anytime between four and five-thirty PM. So, please come and join us tomorrow at Jordan to see all the wonderful upgrades that we've done to make it the College and Career Academy. Additional projects are ongoing, we will have a busy summer, starting as soon as the school year is over, we will start several projects going for the next couple of months, for some of them, for the next couple of years for others. So, we are excited about some of the major projects coming up. And of course, all of this is because of the donation, not the donations, but the support, the support of our East Bloss campaign. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir. Madam Chair, that's all for the Construction Committee.
Thank you, I appreciate the slideshow and that it will be available, because we like for our citizens to see where their penny is going with all the construction projects from the school system, through the museum, through the public library. We cannot say thank you enough to our citizens for supporting the East Bloss. All right, Ms. Chambers, Finance Committee.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Ten point zero one, this is a state-approved school nutrition plan. This is for cafeteria managers, assistant managers, culinary staff, SNP administrative personnel. There is a thousand-dollar bonus structure. This came from the state, is my understanding, and they will be receiving that.
That's their recommendation from the state.
Their recommendation.
So, we're serving more than just a pass-through.
Okay, pass-through.
Correct.
It'll be in the consent, right?
It'll be, no, it's a, no, no vote, just an information item.
Sounds good. Yes, if you have a question, go ahead, Ms. Buckner.
Dr. Lewis, is that recommendation followed by financial support of it, a thousand dollars?
No, this is coming from the state.
It's a pass-through.
These are ESER funds, it came to the state, and they're excess funds that they are giving you.
I just heard recommendation, sometimes they recommend stuff, they don't fund it.
Okay, there are some requirements that they must meet in order to get the bonus, but yes, it is attached.
To qualify, correct.
Okay, ten point zero two is a purchase exception, and you all heard about the mathematics textbook adoption, three-point-five million. Any questions about that item, Board Members? Okay, hearing none, I'll go on to the next one, ten point zero three. This is a purchase exception F, which allows us to purchase from existing competitive bid contracts from the state or the federal government. There are several attached, most of them are either for software, firewall, cybersecurity, things of that nature. There is one, there is grant money that came in for pre-K classroom furniture and supplies. And then, Southeastern Surfaces and Equipment, that is for seating at Veterans Memorial, Baker Middle School, and East Columbus. That is coming out of East Bloss money from twenty twenty. Any questions about that, Board Members? Okay, hearing none, I'll move on to ten point zero four. This is our Soul Source, and that is for fuel. Any questions about that? Okay, hearing none, I will go to the next one, ten point zero five. This is for purchase order increases. There are eBooks, professional services for the Autism Center, there's a gym floor refinishing service. Yancey Brothers, I'm assuming that is for the bus, additional parts and services. And then, there's our online multisensory tutoring service. All of those are increases, and the attachments are there. Any questions about the purchase order increases? Okay, hearing none, I'll go on to the competitive bid purchases, ten point zero six. This is for things like air filters, custodial services, pest control, bus air conditioning services. Any questions, Board Members? All of the attachments are below. Ten point zero seven, we get each month, those are the new, these are new budgets. One is for school nutrition program, equipment grant. The other is another federal grant for student services. And then, there is one for pre-K lottery grant and ESER grant. Any questions about that? They are all attached. Ten point zero eight, there is a list of budget adjustments. The first one is from the Division of Teaching and Learning, Title II-A, improving teacher quality. And the other one is for pre-K. There's one for Division of Student Services. Any questions about the budget adjustments? Many of them are grants. All right, hearing none, I'll go on to ten point zero four, that's our financial statements for the month of March, they are attached. Also, the East Bloss revenue for March of twenty twenty-three is attached. The investment summary is also attached. Any questions about the financial statements? Okay, ten point zero, ten point ten is the donations. We've received over sixteen thousand dollars from citizens, and we want to say thank you for your donations to the Muskogee County School District, and that is attached as well. Any questions about the finances? Okay, hearing none, I'll turn it back over to you, Ms. Green.
All right, thank you so very much. We have one other information item, and that's the new employee scholarship program. Did you want to speak to that?
Ms. Carter will.
I'm excited to say that the message did come out that the scholarship program went live today. We've already, we had already started to receive, we gave them a heads-up on Friday, and started getting some questions, but the application is now available, they can go online, they can earn up to, get up to three thousand dollars, they just have to show proof of what it would cost for the course. They do need to be an employee for at least one year with Muskogee County School District before they're eligible to participate. But all of the criteria and eligibility is right there online with FAQs, and we have, I have to say, ISTS, they did a wonderful job, but the number-one thing was your support. If we, if you did not help us out and allow us to grow that money, to make it available for not only the degreed courses, but for GEDs and certifications, everybody's participation here made this happen, and I'm excited about where we landed, and I'm looking forward to seeing what the results are.
That's exciting.
It is. Thank you all for your support for that.
Thank you so much.
Very good, good, good deed. Uh, Dr. Lewis?
Just very quickly, I think probably everyone knows that Tasha Mormon from St. Mary's Academy is named our twenty twenty-three Teacher of the Year. And also, Allison Shiver of Genshin Elementary was named the first-year Outstanding Teacher of the Year, so congratulations to her. And then, thanks to Mr. Battles and his staff, we'll be hosting the Georgia High School Association State Track and Field Meet here this week, starting Thursday through Saturday. A lot of great opportunities to come out and watch track and field events from throughout the state, truly great competition. Also, then, tomorrow evening at Carver High School in the auditorium, we'll have our Military Service Recognition Ceremony. That's for all of our students who are going to pursue a career in the military. It's a great time to recognize them and thank them for, early on, for their service, and at six o'clock at Carver. That's all I have. Thank you.
All right, anything else, Board Members? I mean, do we have, do you have anything else, any requests, any concerns, all right? Need a motion to go into executive session? Yes, for Personnel and Security Matter? That was a motion. All right, and second. Wave goodbye with your vote? All right, we're in the executive session. Thank you all, have a good evening.